Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the North Andover School Committee meeting of Thursday, November 6, 2025. It's 6:30, and we're going to get started with our regular session, so I officially call this to order. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Just a note for the record, Mrs. Samz has not yet arrived. She'll be arriving a few minutes late. She'll let me know in advance, but we will get started. We do have a quorum present. Consent agenda items, let's start with the minutes. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hicks, the minutes of September 25th have been reviewed by me and, you know, typos, et cetera, corrections made, and they should be good to go.
Thank you. With that, we'll take a motion.
So I'd like to move that we, that we accept the, people may want to read them for a minute, but I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of September 25th as presented in the packet.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Mrs. Cormier, thank you. Any discussion? Thirty seconds to review if necessary. Didn't mean to slam that little bringer.
For emphasis, review with emphasis.
Awesome. Everyone good? Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, passes forward to zero. Mr. Brown, before we go on to the next item, does the process of us having you pre-read them seem to be working out well for you?
Excellent. It's a really good, I think it's a good system, and it, this way, come to the meeting, prepare, ready to go, it shouldn't, really should be smooth every time.
Awesome. Mr. Moskovich and Mrs. Cormier, does the system seem to be working well for you, being on the other side of it, in terms of having them pre-read and corrected and all that?
Yeah, it definitely corrects all the things. We still have to read them, right? Obviously, and so it's still the, but it gets rid of the kind of comments here of, oh, change this, change that.
Right.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Moving on to grants, we have some. That makes me excited. I like money.
We like money, too. I'm going to ask Ms. Ando if she'll just walk us through these grants?
Sure, absolutely. The first set of mini-grants came from ECLC, which are Essex County Learning Community, which is a professional development organization we belong to. We wrote a total of five mini-grants, and three were accepted, implementing ambitious science teaching, women's leadership development group, and the opportunity myth and in-depth study. And so Carol Larkome, Pam Lathrup, and Kristin Ando will all be facilitating one of those grants that we can buy materials and also pay stipends to teachers for attending. So that's exciting.
Can I ask what the opportunity myth is?
Sure. The opportunity myth is the rest of the document that we read this summer during, so when we met in June and read portions of the document about why HQIM is important for students, the opportunity myth is the entire paper.
Can you give us a two-sentence version of what the myth is and then what we're doing in response to that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no problem. The opportunity myth being that the myth would be that students have access to grade-level assignments at all times, that our students aren't doing well because they don't have access to the appropriate grade-level assignments.
Wait a minute. Is that a myth, or is that, that's our operating assumption?
That's our, that's, well, the myth is that the students always have opportunity, the, or that might be our operating assumption. The truth is that about seventeen percent of students actually have access to grade-level assignments on any given day.
Okay.
And that's across, across the country, right? That's not, that's not North Andover, that's U.S.
Exactly, that's across the country, yes, yes. And that percentage is smaller for students who are poor, of color, or on an IEP. And so we have a, we'll have a group of teachers that will willingly do a deep dive into that, into that white paper.
Thank you. Thank you. And Northeast STEM?
The Northeast STEM Network Mini Grants, there's $3,500 in total, and you can see there in our handout exactly who got them. It looks like one student and two librarians, and then Cara got another for ambitious science teaching. So you can see there, I think Cara is with us here tonight. If you have any questions, she would be, it would be best directed at her, but again, competitive mini-grants, and this is what was awarded.
And the student has, that was one we talked about. I had shared that as an upcoming event. That student has completed that mini-grant, did that little mini camp for sixth through ninth grade at the high school.
This already took place?
It already took place.
Oh, darn it. I wanted to go when I read that. Oh, but it's good, though.
Yes.
So a student did the grant?
Yeah.
And got the money and ran it.
Love it.
I'm going to put you on the spot, Mrs. Larkome. I want to hear about ambitious science teaching. Purely biased, because I want to hear more about how to be an ambitious teacher.
Hi, Cara. So ambitious science teaching is a book that is, we did a small group, Summer 2024, of teachers that read it. It was high school and middle school teachers. All of our high school science department are involved in a book study this year, so this might give some opportunity for them to, as Miss Anno said, maybe get a little extra stipend to try out some of the strategies in addition to what they already have planned as part of their evaluation this year. It is research-based strategies. So for example, one of the pieces that a lot of teachers struck to is the idea of modeling in science. So sometimes we might maybe put up a diagram of an eye and label the parts, whereas modeling is really looking at a phenomena, an observation of something that's going on, and understanding and trying to make sense of it through drawing diagrams and describing it and analyzing, you know, the movement of molecules, whatever that situation might be. So the process of doing that over time for students in a science classroom allows them to really uncover the science as opposed to just trying to maybe more memorization of what science is, such as one example from the book.
I feel like constructing models is very present in the science frameworks.
Absolutely.
So it's an important thing for our kids to do.
Yes, dives into different research-based strategies that science teachers can do that, again, are also apparent in all of our high-quality instructional materials. So it's a nice way of just seeing it kind of in a more general context versus just what might be in programs and curriculum that we're looking at.
It's like taking it apart and making sure you know how the parts work. Even, even the molecules that you can't actually see.
Can't see, you need to have. We try not to do that with somebody's eye.
Maybe some cows and, yeah.
Yeah, so it's much better to use a model.
We try not to do that.
Either way.
But modeling is, modeling is different than demonstrating.
Correct.
It is like, it's a very different technique.
It is. And just to add, so Rudra Shuka is the student at the high school who ran the aerospace workshop. He had about nine students that participated on a Saturday. It was great. We actually had an alum come back who had graduated and came and helped along with Mr. Ahern, and they, he's building a wind tunnel. I believe they are, because the glue needed to dry, they have not scheduled the second part, so I'll let you know.
Oh, please.
I haven't, I'm going to see Mr. Ahern tomorrow, so I'll find out what, if they've set a date for that follow-up session. It's really neat.
How big of a wind tunnel is?
I've seen it, I, the piece that I saw is about this big, but it wasn't done yet, so I'm not sure.
Is it mobile?
He was holding it.
Portable, portable.
But it wasn't finished yet, so I'm very curious.
Would it be able to be transported, say, to a conference room at the central office?
I will find out.
Where I've been building.
I will find out.
On a Thursday night in the future.
Yeah, some great, the tricky part with the mini-grants is we, it's a very fast turnaround. So we, like, that week of, he, you know, found out we're trying to get all the pieces in place so that he could get the materials and supplies, because it's, everything's, we, we call it a kickoff to these events because it's all supposed to be part of Dussie STEM Week, but luckily, they are, they realize how tricky it is to get things up and running in September, and so they're pretty flexible with that, kind of starting it now and moving forward, so they.
Before you go, can, do you know much about the, the Makerspace?
I do.
Because that's very exciting, that's really exciting to, I'm super excited to hear that.
To talk about all these. So Ms. Ahern is now at the high school library. There's two pieces. So she has been working with a team to redesign the structure of the library, and we have some entitlement grant that, I'm meeting actually with both of the Aherns tomorrow, to work on both some of the materials for robotics. I can't remember the, the number for that. I think the library itself got $100,000.
And $25,000.
And then 25 for robotics.
Oh, nice.
So we have a nice pool of money. They put together kind of their needs, but in the meantime, it was a little dicey. We weren't quite sure if that federal funding was going to come through, and so Ms. Ahern jumped on this opportunity to maybe spearhead a little bit extra or in addition to. And so she is ordering, I believe, some, I know there's, I think, a cricket on that list, there were, and supplies for that, there were, I believe, I want to say a 3D printer, I think it might list it on there, but a couple different, you know, what could she do for $1,000 to start that process? So she's super excited about having students.
She turned, there's a little space, and then a little, it was like a pretty meeting space, it was a pretty sized state space in the library, and that's the area that she's all cleaned out, has that ready for the Makerspace. Mr. Ahern's shop, somebody in woodworking, made a sign for, for that, and the redesign is going to be amazing. I was there this week and chatting with her and Ms. Holman, the principal, and I said, oh, when this is done, we're going to do a live, we're going to do one of our school committee broadcasts from the new and improved.
I was going to say, do we do a meeting from there, please?
Yeah.
By the way, my new role at Merrimack, I have gotten to know the electrical engineering department really well, and I know the professor there that's the robotics specialist, so I can make a connection to, if you'll, I'll let Mr. Ahern know that, but I can make the correct connection there. And they use VEX at Merrimack, same as, as we do in the high school.
Yeah, some great, great things happening.
Did you say a cricket?
Yes.
Does it chirp, or am I thinking of the wrong thing?
I mean, it makes a noise.
We don't take those apart either.
A, how do you describe it? A, I have a different model, so I always have trouble describing the two. It is a device where you can program it to do some cutting and digital cutting, so often you'll see people making T-shirts and, you know, kind of cutting out designs, and they have iron on vinyl or regular vinyl, you can put on water bottles and all sorts of things. They're a little noisy sometimes, but yeah, lots of fun.
Thank you so much for answering our questions, and thank you to everyone for applying and getting those grants. Let's do them, we'll do the ECLC as one and then the Northeast STEM as another. So Chair, don't turn a motion about the ECLC grants.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we accept the ECLC and STEM mini-grants as shown in the packet.
Just the ECLC.
Just the ECLC first? ECLC grant?
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
And Mr. Hicks votes yes, and then the next one, the Northeast STEM.
And Mr. Chair, I would move that we accept the Northeast STEM mini-grant.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you so much. Moving on to communications. I hear we have a wonderful and amazing student rep report today. And look at, we are starting exactly at 6:45, on time.
All right, I'll be in. So the first thing on our report is how the Future Medical Professionals Club had their first speaker. It was Mrs. Hoagland who talked about her past and work in organic chemistry and attaining her PhD. Another, the report is that picture retakes are this Friday, which is also tomorrow, and also tomorrow, the National Honor Society and Red Cross Blood Drive is tomorrow, and students are encouraged to sign up. You have to be 16 or over to donate, and if you are 16, you do need parental consent to get that form signed. The actual Red Cross, Red Cross Club will be starting soon, and their first main initiative is helping students get CPR certified by a Red Cross official. Senior portraits are due next Friday, the 14th. Ms. Bentley should have sent out an email about that, so please get your portraits sent. Senior superlatives were voted for and released. Winners are taking their pictures tomorrow after school, and I will start the list, and then Ally will take it over. So for the class couple, it was Kylie Keane and Brogan Zwengi. For the should-have-been couple, it was Rachel McDevitt and Karen Ringler. Most likely to become an influencer was Ella Anderson and Hadley Dowd. Best friends since forever were Amira DeTulio and Lila Herman. Best bromance was Rohe's Kureshi and Daniel Thompson. The most athletic were Tommy Farrell and Caitlin Scully. The most musical, Charlie DeSantis and Kylie Sawyer. The most artistic, Trinity DeLovo and Zach Steely. Best dressed were Liam Delaney and Trini Delo. Most likely to live in North Andover in 20 years were Sophia B. and Kyle Tremblay. Most likely to be president, Lucas Ayokum and Luenas Mayel.
Best to bring home to the parents, L. Gordon and Drew Hutchins. Most likely to brighten your day, Oliver Arbo and Mirabel Rayland. Most school spirit, Zoe Hartman and Ally Roberts. Most likely to be famous, Olivia Fritzinger and Kylie Sawyer. Class cap clown, Zach Peterson and Angel Sanchez. Most likely to fall asleep in class, Mason Doughty and Betty Dew. Most likely to be late to graduation, Logan Benko and Kayden Holt. Most likely to have perfect attendance, Louine and Tasha Seacan.
Pause. Do you still have perfect attendance with it?
No.
I have better attendance than him.
Whoa. Interesting.
Go on.
Life of the party, Zaid and Kylie George. Most likely to survive on a deserted island, Anna Caldwell and Mason Iswick Haskell. Most likely to have a viral podcast, Dara Bentley and Connor Carpenter. That's the end of the list.
Awesome.
Winter sports start December 1st. The registration deadline was November 3rd, but they'll still take registrations. You just may not be cleared in time for tryouts. Make sure your physical is up to date in order to try out and play. And congratulations to the teams that made it to the playoffs. Football is playing this Friday, I believe, and teens, teams have been having their banquets as their seasons are ending. NEMASK, the Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, is hosting their conference at NOS on the 18th of November. I am a state delegate and am hosting a leadership workshop. Choir hosted their first coffee house for the year. It was a super successful event and a great fundraiser for the program. I went, it was amazing, and it was Halloween-themed, which was fun. Stuko met with Ms. Lathrup this Monday to chat about the high school, and we just went over some general things. And German Club hosted an Oktoberfest on October 18th. It was non-alcoholic, so it was during school. It was a super successful event.
Also because you're in high school.
But we like to add that, you know? It was a super successful event, having, we had root beer competitions, cup pong, and traditional German games. There's a new German trend for background called pudding mit gabel, and you eat pudding with a fork, and they had a competition of that. I don't know how they competed with that, but apparently they did. You know, the bread was really good.
Think if you hold the bowl up and you use the end of the fork to this.
That's smart. Shout out Frau Herod.
All right, so I guess I'll just continue. The quarter ends on Friday, the 7th, and grades close on the 14th. The band is having their fall concert today, November 6th, and the Mazer or Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives Executive Board is presenting at an Educators Rising Conference tomorrow. Juniors and seniors can now sign up for the annual turkey toss, which includes games, including a turkey toss, but now we've added new games, including bowling, potato sack relay, pie eating, and the entrance fee is canned goods, and there will be prizes for the winners of the games. Additionally, Student Council held their own version of trick-or-treating, where the executive board members walked around the school and gave out candy to kids in classrooms.
Really long report.
Yeah.
I hesitate to ask, but do you really toss a turkey?
Yes. And what, what does the turkey think about this? It's frozen.
I'm sorry? It's frozen, oh.
So you're throwing around like a 15-pound block of ice?
Yeah, really fun.
Is it greased at all?
I don't know. Hopefully not.
Back in the day, we used to do like a greased watermelon thing, where you take the, yeah, and you try to like, do two sides, and it'd be like a slippery watermelon, and you kind of get to the other side, but it kept falling out, and it was fun.
Who won the, who was it that won the most likely to fall asleep in class? Because I think that was me back in my day.
Betty, so Betty Dew and Mason Doughty, and I will say I've had a class with Betty every year, and she's fallen asleep every single class.
Is there a, a place you can look up the records?
I don't know. No, it wasn't here.
Oh, it wasn't here, okay.
But, yeah, I think I tried to bury that one.
I'd like to say a word to the.
It was because I was up late doing homework, okay?
Of course, of course.
A word to the wise, the person who was voted most likely to be late to graduation. They wait for no one, because last year I had a little mishap and was late to graduation, and I was running down the field, putting on my gown behind the bagpipers. So they wait for no one.
There you go.
Even the master service.
Thank you so much. You guys were wonderful, and again, I said, told you before, but thank you when we did our budget directives a few weeks ago. You were really helpful in helping us make sure we hear what's important for the kiddos over at the high school and having that shape the work that we're going to try and do for next year. So I really appreciate not just sharing, but finding out all that information for us. You may stay, you may go. It's, we're going to learn about civics tonight.
Oh, fun.
I'm very excited about that. Public comment. I am going to, on this, I've included the list from last week for everyone in the packet, as well as on the back is the ones from this week. I'm just going to read into the records some of the public comment we've gotten about Mary Lou Connors. Again, we are doing, a committee asked the school committee to dedicate the preschool wing in her honor. The process was, we had to open the naming process, do two weeks of public comment, and then we can vote on it based on our, the input at our next meeting. So this is what, some of the emails, highlights from the emails I got this, since our last meeting. Mary Lou Connors should, we should do this because of her incredible dedication and loving heart. A second person wrote in, she is one of the most dedicated and caring professionals I've had the privilege to work with. North Andover students and families have been fortunate to have Mary Lou as part of their educational journey. She always looks out for every child, ensuring that they feel comfortable, supported, and have a positive early education experience. Mary Lou also goes above and beyond to make sure families feel welcome, comfortable, and confident in understanding the education process and their child's learning journey. Mary Lou's unwavering dedication, compassion, and commitment to students and families make her truly deserving of this honor and lasting recognition. Another community member wrote, she made all the students feel special and they, and liked they had an extra special friend or confidant. Another wrote, during that journey, Mary Lou has made it her mission to give support and advance the knowledge of early childhood development to both her staff and families. Also, her heart and soul is with that school and has been since the first days. She has been an irreplaceable asset to our community of learners and caregivers. This is particularly true for our special education population. She has supported countless families in navigating developmentally appropriate next steps, IEPs, and an overall understanding of the whole child. And lastly, the program is what it is today solely because of Mary Lou. She is the heart and soul of this program. Families move to North Andover because of our reputation at the preschool. Our special education staff at the ABCC treat our students like our own and treat parents like extended family because Mary Lou modeled this for us. She doesn't only know the students, she knows the parents and siblings. It reminds me of Aaron Brock, of the Aaron Brockovich movie. Mary Lou can tell you everything about the families that she is working with at the ABCC. She invests time, energy, and commitment into every family. Parents trust her. They feel comfortable sending their young child, as long, young as two years, nine months, to school for the first time. Some of these children have never separated from their parents, some are medically fragile, some have been recently diagnosed. Mary Lou's bond with families is one of trust. So thank you very much to the community members that sent those words about Mary Lou into the commu, committee via email, and those who spoke last time. We'll take it all under consideration, and we'll vote on it officially at our next meeting on November 20th. Superintendent Lathrup, upcoming events?
Yep, we have a couple. Just want to point out that we have our Veterans Day, the Veterans Day Parade. North Andover Veterans Day Parade is on Tuesday, November 11th. The parade kicks off at 10:00 a.m. The parade starts at First and Main Plaza. The ceremony is immediately following at the North Andover Middle School. All the veterans are invited to attend, march in the parade, so hopefully, we'd love to see townspeople out and supporting the parade. It's really nice to see. Also included in your packet is something from the town clerk's office. It has all the annual town election and all of the dates for, for that, and nomination papers, and that's there. Just thought that might be some good information for you to have. I also just want to remind everyone that the district has sent out some, sent out a letter for families, sharing some resources for families who may be looking for some food assistance, knowing that SNAP benefits have been discontinued or shortened or, you know, cut in half or.
We don't know.
All the things that are happening, but, you know, North Andover and true North Andover spirit has rallied together. I know that tonight at the concert at the high school, they were quickly putting together something for soup for families or people who were coming who might want to bring a canned good or a non-perishable. So the district sent out something, all of our counselors have sent out some other information. Our parent liaisons' names and phone numbers are part of those communications and really encourage families to reach out to them. I think we're sending out a Google survey for families who want to just, looking for some support, just an easy way for them to be able to ask for some help if they need it. The People's Pantry in North Andover is available, I believe it's Town Hall, so I was just, yep, Town Hall, there are items there.
Senior Center, too?
Town Hall, Senior Center.
And the Senior Center.
Society.
And they're just set up with shelves you can drop off or pick up as needed.
But really, just we want to encourage our, you know, our families in North Andover, if you need support or need help, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Sure can.
Mr. Gonsovs, I believe you sent out a message earlier today about the Knights Closet. What, what date is that going to be open for the community members?
Next Thursday, 5 to 7.
And people can sign up in advance to visit the Knights Closet at NAMs or to do that?
They can also show up, and there's even an Amazon wishlist that people can indicate things that they might need that might not have been already purchased and prepared to distribute.
Thank you very much. So Knights Closets are, it's at the middle school, volunteer-run, great, or a great thing that we do for kids. You get to go in and shop for the things that you need, and you get to take the things that you, yeah, take the things you like.
Is it clothing, mostly clothing, or is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
And personal hygiene products.
Yep. There's one at the high school as well.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
No, and then just a reminder to families to please read your school newsletters that our principals are sending out. That's where you get all your information about things that are happening in the schools. Many of our schools will be celebrating Veterans Day as well, and have lots of other kinds of activities, but just look for those. We always say, I used to always say to my staff, and I say to the leadership team now, you know, I try not to send a lot of emails, but we'll send out that newsletter, so families, please try to read the newsletter, because our principals are working hard to put lots of information in there. And just so everyone knows, there's an icon on there that you can click, and it translates to any language that you need, those, our newsletters, so that you can read them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're ahead, I'm so proud of us. We are going to move on to our civics presentation, so.
I'd love to have your team for the table.
I'd love to have your team at the table.
Okay, our wonderful student reps might need to scooch over to allow space for our, for the entire team in.
Scooch is a word that this generation doesn't always get. We, I was at an event this week, and we were trying to get-
You mean like, the younger?
The younger generation. We were trying to get them to scooch. And they just didn't understand scooch.
I don't know what you're talking about. Squish.
Well, there's enough words they say that I don't understand.
I don't know.
I'm fine. We're going to keep our-
Yeah.
Well, one of, I think there's one for one of you to, to stay up if you would like.
I'll join the team.
Awesome. Mrs. Ando, can you introduce, of course you will, but you'll introduce our wonderful team, and they'll do a presentation. We will hold questions to the very end.
That'll be great.
So, can you members just mark down like, questions you have as we go through the slides, and we could, we'll go back in order afterwards. And this is, was asked for by Mr. Moskovich at our retreat, wanting to learn more about our civics program. So, thank you.
Awesome, excellent. So, thank you to my team for coming. Collectively, this team has probably forgotten more about civics than I know about civics, and so I'm so lucky that they're giving us their time tonight. So just to review, we have Jaclyn Taylor, who's one of our directors of curriculum. We have George Gonsovs, who's the proud principal of North Andover Middle. We have Patrick McGravy, who's our eighth, one of our eighth grade civics teachers, and Rebecca DeChano, who is seventh grade social studies, but also department coordinator at the middle school for social studies. And so I'm thrilled that they're here, I'm thrilled. They were working with me at like, 7:15 Wednesday morning, like, all pumped up about this presentation. So, they're awesome. And so thank you so much. Again, please remember, everything is always rooted in our district goals. Most of what we're going to talk about tonight probably has to do with goal number one, HQIM and Equity. The state of Massachusetts released a new set of social studies standards in 2018, and most of the efforts you're going to hear about tonight is for us to align our work with those standards, so that we can, so that we can do what's best for kids. Questions about civics. Mr. Moskovich asked for this presentation during the summer retreat, and then we had some chance to talk beforehand. And so there were four main questions that were driving our work tonight. How are we incorporating civics into our social studies and history courses? How are we teaching students about arguments and counterarguments? How are we teaching the structures of government and the Constitution, and how they relate to current events? And what successes and challenges are we experiencing? And so just those are what we had in mind when we put it together, but of course, we'll answer whatever we can. Just to start, congratulations to Mr. McGravy, who won the 2025 Edward Kennedy Award for Excellence in Civics Education. And so, well done. This is the program from the, I'm going to pass it around. This is the program that came from that award ceremony, and so we're very proud of Mr. McGravy. Is there anything you want to tell us about the award, or about your award ceremony?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition. Yeah, it was a couple Sundays ago, it was the 10th anniversary of the EMK Institute. If you're unfamiliar with the EMK Institute, when Senator Kennedy passed away, part of his will, part of the money that he left was to open a, not a, not like a presidential library, but a, but a museum, an interactive museum where they essentially, in Dorchester, right near the JFK Presidential Museum, they've rebuilt the US Senate completely, and we take field trips there. I think your three student reps all probably went there when they were in eighth grade, and it's a really, really amazing place. They wanted to recognize the 10th anniversary. They gave a lifetime achievement award to President Biden, so President Biden was there, which was pretty great, considering he was just going through some treatments. So he was there and made a very, very powerful speech. Marty Walsh was honored along with others. And then, they picked five educators, a very diverse group of educators, to be recognized for this award. I was definitely floored when I got the email. I, I was very, very surprised and very, very honored. It was an amazing night. We had, we had our own private ceremony, which was great, but there were some very kind words shared with us. It was a fundraiser, so unfortunately, I was not able to have a date, so I went solo, but I managed to have fun anyways. And mingled and met some people, and saw how the other half lived, as my dad used to say. And it was a dinner. Senator Kennedy's widow, Vicki, came up to us at the award ceremony, introduced herself, gave us the award, and then gave us a, a goodie bag that we weren't allowed to open until we got home. So I opened it, and it's, it was a limited edition of Senator Kennedy's autobiography with one of his paintings, and it was signed, and it was numbered. I think mine was number 72, or something like that. So it was, it was a, it was a huge honor. It was, it was just an amazing night, and, you know, it was really about the students. That's really why I got the award, is what, what my students did, and what the students in this community do. So obviously, you know, other than teachers and family members and colleagues, I definitely believe that my students played a huge role in that. So I appreciate you recognizing that, Ms. Ando, and it was, it was, it was a pretty amazing night, and I'll have that award for a year, kind of like Miss America, I guess, and I'll be, I'll be, I'll be working with, I'll be working with the EMK, doing some professional development, encouraging more people to take field trips there. They also do virtual trips there. I'm going to be doing a lot of other really, really cool things, kind of spreading the word about this amazing place, and the specific trip is definitely part of our presentation later that we can, we can talk about. So, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Of course, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So the new frame, new set of frameworks came out, Massachusetts frameworks. There are portions of them in your packet. We, I copied, not the whole thing, but some portions. It starts here, looks like this. And so, key changes in the Massachusetts framework with increased emphasis on civics. So this was new to us in 2018. A new required grade eight course in civics was introduced, focusing on the United States and Massachusetts government and civic life. Requirements for student-led civics projects in grade eight and the high school levels, which we have both here in North Andover, the students do a civics project in grade eight and grade 11, which promotes participatory and project-based civics education, and then increased attention to civics at all grade levels, as an integral part of history and social science. So this is just important to know, that when their frameworks were revised, civics was a major part of the revision. Some structures, just our social studies and history in North Andover public, just so that you know, in K to five, we have about 90 minutes a week, and as you know, you have adopted investigating history, three to five, and we're doing a lot of active curriculum work in grades K to two. The state does, the state provides a pile of resources, or a list of resources, for our K to two students, which our teachers then have to try to put together. Jackie Taylor's leading that work for us, so she'll talk a little bit about that. I know making, making, making a face. It's like, it's very, it's very frustrating, that it's been, it's frustrating for our K to two teachers who want to do, who want to do the right things in order to build those skills. And so, we're working on it though here. Grade six to eight, we have daily 49-minute classes. We use investigating history in grades six and seven. And then we have a civics course in grade eight, which includes the civics projects. And again, the state doesn't have, not yet has adopted a grade eight curriculum, there are suggestions, but it's, we have investigating history in grades three to seven. In grades nine to 12, history is required for three years, and there is a grade 11 student-led civics project generally tied to the, in US history courses. And so, that is just what the structure looks like for, we are going to give you an overview tonight, K to five, six to eight, nine to 12, remembering that the only adopted curriculum we have is in grades three to seven. HQIM does not exist yet in history for K to two. Eight, they're still deciding on, in nine to 12. We're waiting anxiously for the fall, for these things to come out. And so, I'm going to pass off to Jackie to tell us a little bit about work K to five.
So as Kristin had mentioned, all of our work grows out of the history and social science frameworks. These are the content topics that come up that are most related to our civics education within our K to five range. So you'll see, the lower grade levels, a lot of it is about how am I a citizen within my classroom? So it's more localized learning about civics, but as they get older up in the grade levels, it starts turning more toward both history and also our local town, and then more about our expansion as a United States, and then talking about principles of the United States government. And as Kristin was mentioning, K to two, it's, it's a little bit of a rough road, because it doesn't have the same guidance that we have as we get into the older grades. And I'd be remiss if I did not say that I'm standing on the shoulders of three key teachers and a current principal who had started this work right now with the civics for K to two. And where we're at currently is, we're taking a look at all of the resources that the state has suggested, that are acceptable resources, and we're pulling together, based on the standards, what are those available resources that teachers could pull from, with the hope being that we'd be able to roll out a district-suggested resource bank for as you're teaching these specific, excuse me, these specific topics, so that we know that we're in alignment with what the state is recommending.
Thank you, work in progress. Thanks, Jackie. George, you want to introduce your team again?
Yeah, so next up is the middle school, six through eight. And when Kristin told us about this opportunity, I don't know how Pat and Rebecca hit reply that fast. Absolutely, we'll be there. What do we have to do? They had no idea what we were going to be presenting or talking about. They volunteered. So I've had them sign blank checks for me. So, thank you Rebecca DeChano for being here, grade seven, social studies teacher and our academic coordinator, and Pat McGravy, who you've already heard so much about, and one, was one of our flagships when we changed over to civics, and he was quick to embrace the curriculum and the changes. So, talking about six and seven, Rebecca DeChano.
Hello. Last time I got to speak with you while I was recovering from COVID and was wrapped up in a blanket on my couch-
You were on the TV.
You were on the TV. So it's nice to actually be able to see your faces a little bit more clearly. So when I was asked to think about how civics is incorporated into sixth and seventh grade, it actually felt a little daunting, because one of the reasons that I love social studies and that I teach social studies is because I believe that learning about the past, learning about other places and people, builds us into better people that are able to go out into the world and not just have it act upon us, but to act on the world and to make conscious decisions. I figured that was a little broader than you were hoping for, so I started paring down what I was thinking. And so I'm going to talk about three different, kind of big buckets, for how I think what we do relates to civics. I'm going to talk about the questions that students are asked in our curriculum. I'm going to talk about how we answer those questions, and how we assess students' understanding of what they've learned, and what new skills they've acquired. And lastly, I'll talk about other structures in the classroom that I think support turning our students into active citizens in the future. So, the investigating history curriculum is inquiry-based, which means that we are asking students to investigate various topics in ancient history and geography. That's what sixth and seventh grade is. It's a two-year ancient history and geography course. So every unit, we have a big essential question, and then within that unit, we have clusters, and those clusters are, when we explore, smaller topics within that bigger unit. So what I did is, I pulled out all of the questions, both essential and supporting questions, from sixth and seventh grade, that I feel most directly relate to what it means to be a citizen in today's world. So most of these are on government and leadership, and what that looks like, both in the past and today. So these are some of those questions. I won't bore you by reading them all, but just yesterday in my class, and in the other two seventh grade social studies classes as well, we just started the question of, in the Mauryan Empire, what influenced leaders, and in what ways did they influence society? So that's what we started yesterday. I'm ready for the next slide. Thank you. So, after we have this big question, what happens? So the first thing that happens, that I'm going to point your attention to, is there's some pictures of some very wrinkled-looking giant pieces of paper covered in sticky notes, and those are actually very important posters that exist in the seventh grade classrooms, and is something that the sixth grade teachers are looking into incorporating as well. So, this all starts with students asking questions. So we have our question about leadership in the Mauryan Empire, and our students then develop questions to help them answer the big question. And that sounds kind of confusing, and it's definitely a little bit difficult for our students when they start, but it's a skill they pick up really quickly. And on the bottom of the screen where it says, Unit One, Cluster Four, Inquiry Chart, that, those are the questions that my Section Four came up with yesterday, and this takes us about 15 minutes. It's not a super long task, and some of their questions just like, really blow me away, both in what they're able to pull from the outside of school, but also what they remember, right? So they're naming different types of government, and they're wondering which one, the one we're studying falls into. They're asking questions about how religion affects the ways that people lead and their, and their actions that they take. As we go through each of our lessons in a cluster, we return to our inquiry chart, and we write down something we've learned from our lesson that helps us answer our question. Students then, and I covered their face because they were a little embarrassed, they didn't want to be in the presentation. They are smiling, you just can't tell. The yellow paper they have is their own copy of the inquiry chart that they've been writing on, and they use it to complete formative assessments at the end of every cluster. Those formative assessments help me figure out who needs support, helps them figure out how they're doing. And then at the end of the unit, we answer our essential question, and this, these, these are two samples from last year's unit, because we're not quite there yet. And students are asked to grapple with really huge amounts of information, things they learned months ago. They've had to hold on to these papers, which, trust me, in seventh grade is quite the accomplishment if they have them all. And they are asked to draw connections between all of the things we've learned from September to now, and then to write about what all of these different disparate resources have in common, and how they're going to answer our essential question. And it's a really big lift, but I am always surprised with how well they do, and for those who might need a little bit of help, that's why I keep lists of how everyone's doing on the formative assessments. So, besides all of that inquiry work, and I think I forgot to mention why I included that, I think that being a thoughtful citizen in a democracy means you ask tough questions, and then you go out, you find as much data and information as you can, you analyze it, you make connections and you draw conclusions, and then when that data and information changes, you rethink what you thought, and you do it all again. And so I think that's really why I'm so into the inquiry aspect of our curriculum. Sorry that I forgot to mention that before. So there are lots of other practices that I believe help our students develop into thoughtful, capable, and informed citizens in sixth and seventh grade, but I wanted to kind of highlight a couple. The first is an investigating sources protocol that we use often. We've used it four or five times already, this unit. We ask students to start by just taking a look at the information that they have, what are they looking at, what types of pictures, what type of information is available. We then do a deep dive, we read, we annotate, we take notes, sometimes they're sketch notes, sometimes they're written notes, depending on the task, and then we make connections to what we've learned in other lessons, or in other places. Another thing we do is, we do a lot of argument writing, and we introduce and continue to use the claim, evidence, reasoning format to help students really walk through their ideas. I believe that writing is thinking, and when we help develop our students into better writers, they become better thinkers who are able to clearly express their ideas, they're able to incorporate evidence, and then they're able to try to convince other people of why they believe what they do. We also do a lot of discussion, use lots of different protocols for this. The goal is that every voice is heard, students learn how to build consensus, and grapple with how exceptionally challenging that can be, and how to respectfully disagree with one another. Because I don't ever expect to live in a world where everybody agrees with me, but I would love to live in a world where me and my students and everybody else can have conversations, where I can learn from people who disagree with me, and still feel respected at the end of the day, so that we can all learn. And, yeah, that's all I got, really.
Exactly. Thank you, Rebecca. There are a few things I would like to do, to be a seventh grader again, but I feel like one thing would be, I would love to sit in, in Ms. DeChano's class. You know what I mean? As a, as a member, your enthusiasm and your joy for the topic just bleeds through, and there are very few reasons I'd go back to seventh grade, but I would be. It would be, exactly, but it would be to, to be your student.
You are all welcome.
Exactly. I'll visit. How's that? That was awesome. Thank you.
Seriously, that was incredible. Someone who pretends to observe Rebecca, I sit in her class all the time, but I'm not actually taking any notes, I'm just enjoying what's happening.
Some of the students aren't either, it's okay.
They behave so well.
We're working on that.
For the grade eight civics curriculum, it's broken into seven core content topics, and what I'm going to do, right out of the frameworks, is I'm going to read what those topics are, but that's tough to understand what is actually meant simply by hearing the topic. So I'm going to share with you what the question is that students are working to answer, which I was set up perfectly by Ms. DeChano's presentation, so you can understand what students are working toward in that unit. So Topic One is the philosophical foundations of the United States political system. Question, what were the roots of the ideas that influenced the development of the United States political system? This will be answered in the civics curriculum. A Topic Two, the development of the United States government. How did the framers of the Constitution attempt to address issues of power and freedom in the design of the new political system? Topic Three, the institutions of the United States government, which, by the way, is going to be one of the- which by the way, is going to be one of the questions on MCAS. That is the topic selected for this year's civics test. They actually tell you which topic, there is a cumulative test, but that will be the topic, that will be the focus. And that is, how do the institutions of the US political system work? Topic 4, rights and responsibilities of citizens. What is the role of the individual in maintaining a healthy democracy? Topic 5, the Constitution amendments and Supreme Court decisions. How has the content and interpretation of the Constitution evolved over time? Students will be looking at many, many case studies during this unit. I'm flipping through three pages of case studies to get to Topic 6.
You get to pick the ones you want to focus on, so you don't have to do all of them.
I just learned we are not doing all of the case studies. How did you finish that that fast? Topic 6, the structure of Massachusetts state and local government. What is the role of state and local government in the US political system? And Topic 7, freedom of the press and news media literacy. How does a free press support a democratic government? So those are the seven topics covered. And I can feel the energy.
Exactly, yes, a lot.
Light and cheery.
Right, right.
Well, they make it sound good. They really do.
Those are heavy, meaty, substantial things for everyone to be working with.
Great. So just in talking about eighth grade, I thought it would be a really nice way to segue into kind of a, some common experiences that our eighth graders go through. With myself, I'm 8B, and then my colleagues, Ms. Lapierre and Ms. Gaffney, they've been with me from the start. We've been, you know, starting since everything happened, and these are the units that we do. We've really worked very diligently to not necessarily go in the order of what Principal Goncalve talked about, but we, I think we've come up with a system. These are not every single unit, but I just wanted to give you kind of a sampling, and I think it ties in nicely to what George just said. So we begin the year trying to really get the kids excited about civics. And we do a unit called "What Is Civics?", and it's a real trip to have the kids, you know, the kids see civics on their schedule. It doesn't say social studies. It only took three years to get it not be social studies, but it says civics now. And it's funny, they, they come in, and the first year it was on the schedule, they were like, "What kind of, what is this class?" So, you know, we all kind of make it almost like a game, like it's a kind of an icebreaker now. "What do you think civics is?", and, you know, some kids will say, "Oh, well, it's learning about politics", or "It's learning about politicians." Some kids say, "Oh, it's psychology, right? It's a psychology class, right? We're going to learn about like psychological issues." And I'm like, "Well, I guess kind of we are. I guess kind of we are." You know, and then we just, and then what's great, what, you know, what Carrie, Susan, and I all try to do is we try to come up with a class definition of civics. And what we really try to get at is not only is it the learning of how our government works, but how to apply it to your life and how to navigate it. And it's, and, and I, I think that the state's done a great job with these frameworks in eighth grade, because it is more like a life skills class. I always tell people, "It's not your parents' civics class. It's not memorizing the preamble. It's not, you know, doing those types of things. It's much more interactive and it's much more engaging." So with that "What Is Civics?", we also like to start the year out with just a brief introduction into civil discourse. These are things that we're going to be doing all year. We give models of, you know, what is good, what is not good, what is quite bad. And the kids are very, very frank when we say, you know, "What's your impression of debate?", and, you know, what they've seen in their young lives is yelling and screaming at each other and, and things like that. And we always say that this course is here in Massachusetts, so when you go into the world, this is not what's going to be on the television. And the kids do a really great job, and this is what we work on throughout the year with them, with great debates and great topics, and it's a, it's a theme that's through all the units. We then move into something that is really, really important in eighth-grade civics, and that is civic identity and values. Really having the kids understand what are values, what are their values. And, you know, shared values as well, shared values of the community, that's another piece that we talk about. And then civic identity, your internal identity, your external identity. How do other people see you? How do you see yourself? And it's really, really important, and I think at first, the kids are kind of like, "What are we doing in this hippie-dippy setting, talking about our values and identity?" And we always say to them, "This, this will pay off." And in civics, in order to really look at these complex issues, you really have to know who you are first. And that's not always an easy thing, and the kids really, really enjoy it. They all eventually come around, but it is definitely very new for them. When we do the Student-led Civics Project, I mean, that's worth gold right there, because every single one of their topics is totally connected to their identity and values, so it really, really pays off. We like to also start off the year a little bit with responsibilities of citizenship. What are the required responsibilities? What happens when you don't do those things? Very interesting, a lot of the young ladies in my class don't understand why it's only males that had to, have to register for the draft. You know, and so that's a very interesting angle. And then suggested responsibilities. That's a, that's another thing that, you know, we, we talk about, you know, what are things that you don't have to do, but you should do as a good citizen? And then we talk about the pathway towards citizenship. We do a lot of myth-busting in terms of how to become a citizen, you know, talking about documented and undocumented workers. We kind of talk about our community. My former colleague, friend, but Ms. Darman, you know, she has gone through the process of citizenship, and that is something that really connects with them, and a lot of kids have stories about that. And I have friends and family members, so that is definitely a ignite place to start. And then we go into the world influences on the United States government. We talk about how did Greece, Rome, the Enlightenment, and Great Britain and Europe influence us? Obviously, we get a lot of great preparation from Rebecca and her colleagues. When, when, when we do talk about Greece, Greece and Rome and all the other areas in seventh grade, it is very easy to do. The Enlightenment, obviously, is something that they really don't have a lot of background in. And I also think what's wonderful about the frameworks is Native American influence and the Iroquois Confederacy. That's great, and it's a really big part of what we do. I had a student a couple of years ago who was about 80% Native American, and he was, came up to me at the end of class and said, "This is the first, one of the first times I've ever talked about Native Americans in a course in, in, in here." So it's really great that we have that. And then we move into the rights of the people, and we do that towards the beginning with the American Revolution. And it's definitely not a history course, it's definitely not learning about all the battles. The state does a really good job of allowing us to focus on what rights that we have today came from the American Revolution. So we really kind of get to talk about the reasons of the, of the revolution, and then we talk about what rights do we have today, you know, search and seizure and all these other types of things, no illegal search and seizure, which is great. And then, of course, that also leads into the Articles of Confederation, the Declaration of Independence, those founding documents that the state wants us to look at. And, and, and once we get through all of that, which takes us quite a long time to do, we then move into the powers of government, which is going to be the local task, as George just said. So we talk about the branches of government, we talk about checks and balances, and we definitely do a lot of discussion and a huge examination of that. Some other things that we do, because I'm not going to go through the whole year, is in the fall, we do talk about elections. Obviously, we did the presidential election last year, and the kids were so into it. We do an Electoral College competition where they have to guess who, how many people are, how many votes they're going to get and, and things like that. This, this fall, we really didn't have as much to talk about. Last year, ballot question 2 with the MCAS was huge. The kids were so fired up about it, and when the results came out, they were all running to our desk telling, "Did you find out the vote?", you know, and things like that. And then, of course, the spring, when we talk about Select Board and, and, and obviously, school committee elections. And then obviously, we talk about the state elections and ballot questions and things like that. One thing that we really love to do is the media, media literacy, freedom of the press. That's how to navigate through the media while at the same time talking about freedom of the press. And this is a mini-unit that we do, that we really have the kids work really, really hard on. It's a huge learning experience for the kids in terms of what they use in argument or what they would want to cite or what they would want to use in sources. It's a pretty, i- i- it's just a really great way that the state does that. And again, the state does pose most of that as a life skill, as something that you're going to need to be able to do as an adult in your community. And then, right around the spring, we start with the Student-led Civics Project, which I'll talk about in a little bit, also commonly known as the Slic Pro, where the kids can pick a topic, and there's a whole process to that. So that's, that's kind of some of the units that we do in a common experience of an eighth grader at NAMSS. And I think Kristin's going to talk about the next couple of slides.
As Pat mentioned, there are two other people that teach civics, Mrs. Gaffney and Ms. Lapierre. And Mrs. Gaffney sent along this really powerful picture of a, what I would call a chalk talk, where kids could silently record questions they had, answering, "What have you heard in the news? And how does it connect to the Constitution and the structures of government that we've studied?" Mr. McLaughlin, who's our 11th grade, or who's our high school teacher, who isn't here tonight, but sent me lots of information, said, "Very often, the students are always coming saying, 'I read this in the news, I saw this in the news', and they come to their trusted adults and want to process that with their trusted adults." So I think it's a very powerful picture of lots of student idea. Also, in your, I didn't put the hot lick in, but there is a TikTok argument piece, "Should TikTok be banned?" There's a lesson plan in your folder that Mrs. Gaffney shared with me that I thought was a really interesting way to get kids involved in current events and then structure a well-composed argument with their own thinking. So I wanted to share this very powerful work that is also going on in eighth grade. I also asked the teachers, you know, "What successes and challenges are we experiencing?" Again, like you've heard from our, from our teachers, that students are very curious and engaged, they're very vested in their eighth-grade project. They see themselves as levers for change, and they're very passionate about their topics. Some challenges that we might be is that scaffolding is needed. Social studies has not always been a focus in the early grades. And as Jackie shared with us, like we, you know, even from a state level in the K-2 world, we don't have a lot of resources to draw on. So the idea that to have to come to eighth grade and talk about all of these things, we're not always completely, we don't, our students have not historically always been completely prepared. And so, again, while we're working on HQIM and everything else. But there are fewer curricular resources available for social studies than there are for like ELA or math. You know, out there, as far as published, as far as accepted, as high-quality. There's fewer resources, our teachers have to work harder to find those resources. And then the idea of like social media and, and, the influence on their own, on, on their bias of our young students and what they're seeing in the media. And so a part of the world, part of the work is, how do we responsibly find sources that we can use in order to guide our work? And so those are some successes and challenges. I'm going to pass it back to Pat to talk a little bit more about the course itself.
Were you gonna, I'm not sure, were you going to talk about just about some of the curriculum that we use? I can talk about it, or were you going to talk?
Oh, was this my job? Yes.
I don't want to take your job.
No problem. And so awesome, so again, the state has given us, so Investigating History is available to us in grades 3 to 7, but the state has given us a list of other appropriate resources, and so some of which you see up here. And so our teachers really have to choose from them. The state is in, the DESE is in process of adopting or recommending curriculum for grades 8 through 12, but we are still waiting on that. So our teachers have pulled from one or more of these resources in order to develop the curriculum that we have for our students. Now, is it your turn?
It is my turn. I believe it is. So I think most people in the room are very familiar with this process, but obviously, for the people watching at home as well. So this is the Student-led Civics Project. And these are the five steps that we work on together with our students. Usually around March, we begin, and then that continues literally on, until the end of May to the beginning of June. So the first thing is, they are going to identify a topic or an issue. Kids usually fit into one of three categories. They, some kids, because we've been doing the Slic Pro for years, have had siblings or have heard about it. Some kids just come on the first day of school and they totally know what their topic's going to be already, and they want to talk about it, which is great. And then the next group are kids that really, really have to, they, they kind of have a clue of what they want to do, but they really need to narrow it down, and obviously, you know, they need some help from the three of us to kind of work on that. And then honestly, there are a group of kids that just have no interest in it, and, you know, really, really, you really have to work very hard with them to, to get them into it, and it can begin a conversation. I can remember I had with one of my students, you know, "What is something that you're frustrated about?" "Well, you know, I want to, the youth center, it isn't always open on the times that I want to go, or certainly, certain grades can go and I can't go." And so we weave that down to, you know, looking at the policies of the youth center. And obviously, Rick is someone that is willing to meet with kids and talk about that. So that's kind of, those are kind of the categories of the kids that we get. The other thing that, you know, we want to talk about is, it's really unbelievable to see that kids normally want to work in groups. As a teacher, with this, it's almost better than groups, because you don't have to grade as many. But there are, if I'm being honest, but kids really separate themselves from their peers on this, because it's about their identity and values. And I remember a young lady, and she was with a bunch of her buddies, and they wanted to do something about lacrosse fields or field hockey fields, and she kind of joined, and then I literally heard her say, "I don't even like sports. What am I doing here?" And I said, and she, I said, "So you want to?", she's like, "Yeah, I totally want to do something else, Mr. McGraw-Bee." So it's really nice to see that, that they really care about these issues. And then they go into investigating and doing research. And this is where we really want to talk about, looking at both sides of your issue and your topic. Not everyone is going to love your topic. So obviously, you want to get research that, that really talks about, supports your topic and your issue, but you want to go on the other side too. What are your opponents going to be thinking? If, you know, if you want, I don't know, if, if you want an hour recess, okay, that's great. You can give us a lot of reasons. You got to do some deep digging into why we can't have an hour recess. Who are the people that are going to not only disagree with you, but give you a reality check on that? So that second step is really, really important. They have to look at both sides of the issue. And it's, i- i- it's a challenge for them, but I, I think it's one of the most rewarding steps of the process. Then, once they've done significant research and looked at both sides, they then make an action plan. Kristin talked about levers of change. Levers of change are obviously, where are you going to go? Who are you going to talk to? The other thing is, we talk about, do you want to just raise awareness and, and, and kind of bring the topic to front? Or are you thinking about really advocating for a change and really meeting with people? And so they come up with a plan, and we kind of narrow it down with, well, what's your issue? How does this follow? You know, and a lot of the time, you know, they'll want to speak to George or Pam or the school committee, and, you know, we always have to say, you know, you know, "It's great to talk to them, but there are some other areas that you need to go talk to first." And then obviously, if they look at state issues. People of, people in this community have been amazing, from school committee members in this room to former school committee members, the town manager, the deputy town manager, so, state representatives, state senators. They're just so cooperative, and they answer emails. They've met with my students. We've done Google meets with them. And I think those kids that want to take it that far, the impression that it, it has on them is unbelievable, because they're like, "The town manager's going to meet with me? Like, seriously?" And I remember once, when I was coming to the, at, at the time, it was Assistant Superintendent Lathrop, and the student's like, "Are we really meeting with the Assistant Superintendent right now?" I'm like, "Yeah, we are. We are. We're going to", you know, and, and she's like, "Well, what, what are you going to do?" I said, "I'm not going to do anything." I said, "This is you." And the great part of this experience is, you know, And she's like, well, what, what are you gonna do? I said, I'm not gonna do anything. I said, this is you and the great part of this experience is um, you know. Kids don't need you. I can remember a couple of years ago, I had some girls that were talking about feminine hygiene products and um. I kind of got the ball rolling with the assistant superintendent and they kind of looked at me and one of them very politely said. You can go back to class, Mr. McGravy. And it's kind of like, you know, when your kids, your own children do that to you. And that's really the essence of what you want to do. You really want them to be able to navigate this through on their own. And then taking action, obviously that is not for everyone. Not everyone wants to take action. Um, but that is definitely something that the three of us support. And we'll go above and beyond and reach out and work out. I know Susan and Carrie do the exact same thing with their students. We really, really advocate for them to make this more real. And then there's a nice reflective piece that allows them to think about it. And then. As Kristin said, it will carry over into the high school. It was really cool to see um, the showcase of the high school civic action projects. And I recognized four poster boards and I could totally say, yep, my, I remember this one. So it's something that's still with them years later. So that's, that's kind of the process of what they all do. We have been very, very lucky enough. Um, the state wants to do, wanted to do these things called the civic action project. Um, state showcases. So what they do is they, you know, you apply for it. And um, you know, we applied for it at NAMs and you tell them how many kids are in the school and, and, and the. Dynamics of teams and things like that. And you know, obviously you would love to get six, seven, eight, nine slots. And they give you three. Um, you know, so you have one per team and um, that's tough. That's really, really tough where you can only pick one, but um, it's, it's a process that, you know, we take very, very seriously. Um, so it, we go to Worcester. Um, and we actually go to the DCU Center. Um, and the DCU Center, which is a concert venue, is completely converted. Into a showcase. So you can see those pictures there. Um, the picture at the top with the podium, those were the three teams from um, from last, from last spring that we went. And then of course, um, I, I think some of you remember the William Sims Town Meeting Group. Uh, those are them now. I believe those kids are now juniors. And then we also have some um, students that did theirs on the MCAS ballot question. Um, over the past couple of years, North Andover has been very, very fortunate. They do give. The great thing about this thing is it's not a science fair. They don't give prizes. They don't give trophies. That is the best thing about it. Every kid feels validated. They really don't make it a competition. And I think it shouldn't be a competition, but North Andover was lucky enough two years ago to, to get a commendation. And they do it through email and it's usually really quiet. Um, so those gentlemen there, they got a commendation on their. MCAS, uh, getting rid of the MCAS graduation requirement. And then last year I had two young ladies do their civic action project on the budget process and the budget crisis. And they went to town meeting and they held signs and um, they, they talked about their experience of getting involved. And they were recognized for it, um, which was really, really great. And then last spring, I thi- I think it's in Principal Gonsov's office. Um, the governor um, gave our school a commendation um, for our work and dedication to the civic action project. Um, which was really, really great. And, and it was a hu- huge shout out to all those kids that were, were doing this um, years and years ago. And then the, the civic allies, I already talked about this, we do have speakers come in. Um, that come into and talk mainly about the state and local government. Um, we, we obviously have their state representative, Tram Nguyen. Um, who, who is now going to be running for Congress. And then that was then, I believe, state Senator Diana DeZoglio, who is now the auditor. Um, and she came in, which was great. And then of course, we have our wonderful, wonderful um, Melissa and her team. They're always coming in. A D, you know, D, um, the deputy, she teaches college um, also and, and she absolutely loves it. So I think it's, we're very lucky in North Andover to have a community where people. In the world of civics, I call them our civic allies. They come in and they'll, they'll talk to the kids and um, they'll work with the kids. So I think we're very, very fortunate. It's been a great partnership. Uh, the other thing that I just wanted to highlight with some wonderful things for students, um, this. Every March, they have a Massachusetts Civics Week and um, the Civic Education Learning Coalition. Have hearings at the State House. Um, and in March of 2024 and also in March of 2025. Um, they asked me to pick a former um, slick pro group to go there. Uh, what's really great about the hearing is part of the 2018 law of that, the frameworks that Kristin um, referenced. Is also money for PD and um, for civic education. And that money is pulled, tried to be pulled every year. So this is a hearing where staff members from state reps and state senators come. Um, obviously, uh, this was one last year, two, yeah, last year. And, and then two years ago, someone who I think you're all very familiar with, Mahak, um, who worked, so worked with Mr. Hicks and worked with Pam on the holiday policy. Um, she came as well. So it's a really, really nice thing to do. Um, and it's. Something that hopefully we're going to be doing again in 2026. It's very, very powerful. Their parents come. Um, you know, it's like Mr. Smith goes to Washington, they're at the desk, they're on the microphone and it's very, very powerful for them. So. It's been great and we're going to continue doing that. And then the last thing, the common experience that I wanted to mention to is. The field trip to the EMK Institute for the US Senate. Um, it's not easy. Um, it's uh, six field trips. It's six field trips. We, we have to do two days per team. So obviously Principal Gonsov is great about allowing me to book the trips. Like the first week of September, it's like literally getting concert tickets. I have to confirm with him. He looks at the MCAS schedule and then boom, we send him the dates and then they send us the six back. And then, you know, we worry about the buses and other things later. This isn't really a field trip. It's, it's an experience. It's, it's not a clipboard answering a scavenger hunt. These kids go to a mock-up, you see them right there. They go to the US Senate. They sit at a desk, they have a comfy chair, they have a political party, they have a state. And you know how eighth graders are, you know, oh, this is gonna be so boring, you know, and then, you know, they're on whatever on the, on the buses and. We walk in and outside of the EMK is not a very impressive building. It just kind of looks like a office building. And they go in and it's kind of like a hotel lobby. And then they walk into the chamber and. Even my most pessimistic students are, I can't believe that they're all looking around and sitting and rolling in their chairs and things like that. And. They have the opportunity to get on the microphone and debate and they go into committees. Um, our simulation every year is the Electoral College. So what we do is in the Senate, we begin the process of amending the constitution. So the first thing that we, we do is we debate the Electoral College. Should we keep it? Should we scrap it? Um, and then um, they go into committee and they write their opinions. And then they're allowed to voluntarily go on the microphone and. They, they, they do really, really get into it. And then one of the coolest things they do is I give them the names of all the kids and. They'll say Senator Pat McGravy from Wisconsin. And then the kid rises and. How do you vote? And they get to vote on the microphone and it's recorded. It's just so real for them. Um, and I believe last year, uh, on my, on my two trips, we, kids overwhelmingly wanted to get rid of. The Electoral College. And then of course, the leader of the Senate says, well, this is only the beginning. This is only the beginning. We need to talk about the next group that needs to approve this and the states. And so they do get to learn the amendment process. Um. The thing I want to end with, and this was said to me when I got my award, is since we have been going to the EMK in 2018. We even did a virtual one in 2021, over 2,500 NAM students have gone to the EMK. Um, which I think is one of their biggest numbers that they have of people that go there. So it's just, and we're, we're going again. Uh, in May and June as well. So that kind of highlights a common experience for the eighth graders for civics.
So thank you, thank you. Um, I had a chance to talk with Colin McLaughlin and Brian Chee Hee at the high school. Uh, we have a civics project that happens in 11th grade. And generally the first question of that project is, do you remember what you did in eighth grade? Would you like to continue that project or would you like to start something new? And so um, it's exciting that we sort of, we see kids. Involved in this process at different phases of their adolescence. And so these are just some pictures of some uh, of the high school projects. Everything from funding the arts to protecting Lake Kachikwic to NAS against bullying and free menstrual products. Um, in girls' rooms. And so those are all, those are some examples. Again, I can't speak to it as eloquently as one of the high school teachers would, but we'll have them back another time. And um, Mr. McLaughlin just shared with me Student Government Day, where North Andover High School student reps from the last two years. Um, attend a student government day and he has some photos that go along with that. And so we will, and I know we are not on schedule, Mr. Hicks.
You're not.
Questions.
That's okay. It's all important that we hear it. Thank you so much to the presenters. Um. So thank you very much. Why don't we take it in chunks? Um, so if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask about um, the K to five stuff. And then we'll do the same thing for six to eight and then high school. Um, or we'll, we'll do seventh and eighth and then sixth and seventh and then eighth because they're very different. But any questions about elementary or K to five social studies civics learning? Ninety minutes doesn't, a week doesn't sound like very much.
No, it's not.
Makes me sad.
It does. And so that's.
How do we change that?
Uh, well, the reality is that investigating history is written for 90 minutes a week because of the idea that even, like, even when we use our HQIM. With the idea that we're splitting to an extent, we're splitting that time with science. And so generally the 90 minutes a week works out that you do like a very large, like four to be, five a week unit in social studies. Then you do sci- rather than like breaking it up over the day. So the kids have more like concentrated, um, concentrated like. Learning in either social studies or science. But it's interesting because even the investigating history is written for 90 minutes a week. And so um, good question. I don't know.
It makes me sad that we have to continually, as educators, we have to continually choose between science or social studies. And the overwhelming time during the day is given to the other two subjects. And as a social studies educator, it makes me sad.
I get it.
Any other questions about elementary? Or K to five? Um, I have one more. When we say, um, Jaclyn, um, we're gonna have some district suggested. Can we change suggested to district? Something else?
Yes, I would say maybe the suggested in the way I was saying it is here are your list of options for the standard. What is, you are getting to pick within that list, but we're not like going outside of that list to be able to address our standards.
I think when the work is done, that would be up to us. You could adopt it.
I could. We could.
We could, exactly. Right, right.
I could suggest it.
As a group, we could adopt it as, you know, as part of our curriculum when the work is finished.
Um, great. Uh, any questions on the sixth or seventh, sixth and seventh inquiry-based curriculum?
I do. Um, how do you, well, two things. One, how do the students initially receive this? I'm trying to picture myself or my kids at that age, reading something like this and going. You know, well, what? So how, how do you, how do they, how do they receive it, the way it is?
The whole curriculum?
Well, yeah. Well, the, uh, I would, you know, the inquiry-based curriculum like this particular slide.
Like at the beginning, when you started.
So, hmm.
And then the follow-up to that would be like, for the ones that are, let's call them reluctant, uh, reluctant history learners or reluctant civics learners. Um, you talked, Pat talked a little bit about how he motivates some of them, but I'm wondering if the, the younger set here, this, the sixth and seventh graders. How you kind of motivate them. You know, he, he, he said, essentially you said, what, what bothers you, right? What's a pain point? And, and maybe that's a good generation of ideas. Yeah. But what about the, the younger ones?
Yeah. Um, that's a, how students. Like experience it at first. I'm, I'm really thinking about your question. I'm not stalling, I promise. You know. There are all, like, there are always students, no matter the subject, no matter the day, no matter the year, that are harder to motivate. And you know, there's, there's a million reasons as to why they feel um, the way they feel. And you know, it's our job to not give up on trying every tool we have to get them engaged and to get them hooked. On what we're doing in class. But I will say, the vast majority of students. Are, I, I mean, I believe all students, they, they want to learn, right? Like everybody wants to learn. Everybody wants to be successful. Um, and how many skills you have in order to get there varies. And so I think, you know, one of the biggest things that me and the rest of the people at NAMs do is like, we try not to, to give up. Like on anybody who's not interested. But really when we ask students, what do you need, like, what do you want to know about this? Um, how are we going to sort this out? I want you to come up with as many questions as you can and not worry about if you think they're dumb or not. We'll worry about what our best questions are later. Um, but anytime that we are asking students to participate in evaluating. Information, giving us their opinion, hopefully based on evidence. Um, that, that's when the classroom, you know, that's when people like really come to life. Because seventh and sixth graders are opinionated about a lot of things, right? And when we give them the opportunity to share those opinions and.
That kind of wakes them up?
Yeah, you know, and. I, you know, I can't say for a hundred percent, like, I can't say a hundred percent of my students are gonna walk away saying it was like the best class. Of their lives and that they enjoyed every minute of history. But I can say with. You know, strong confidence that they will have learned something, they will have at least participated. In a part of their education and walked away with something that hopefully they can make a connection to later in their lives. And I'm not sure I answered your question or if I just soapboxed.
I, I was looking at some of the, you know, ancient history stuff that's in there, right? Like, and I'm thinking about a modern kid who's, you know. Distracted by a million things, you know, uh, video games and whatever it is, right, that hits there. And like how. It was really just curiosity about how you try to reach them and get them, you know, to understand that actually has an influence on what's going on today.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, um, I think a lot of, if we look at like, so. I'm talking a lot about seventh grade because that is what I teach and that is where I live on a day-to-day basis, but.
God bless you, by the way.
Thank you. I love it. Um, the sixth grade also is doing all of these things. But like, if we look at that first question that's listed under seventh grade, how do geography beliefs and leaders influence a society? This is not a question that just applies to ancient history. Um, it is not a question that only lives in ancient history. We look at the drying up of the Aral Sea in Uzbekistan. We look at um, pollution in the Ganges River. Um, for geography, when we're talking about belief systems, we're talking about mostly Hinduism and Buddhism, which are the third and fourth most popular. Religions practiced in the world. And when they're looking at quotes by leaders like uh, Katilia and Ashoka, so. Talking about, you know, a hundred-ish uh, BCE. These are, these are things that apply all the time. We looked at a quote from. An advisor to one of the uh, Mauryan emperor, emperors. And the quote is all about. How leaders should care about the happiness and well-being of their citizens. And that that is how leaders should measure their own success and their own happiness. And I feel, I just, I mean, that's, that's today, right? All of that is today.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Joe. So this is gonna start as a concern and then you can take my concern as something you can comment on. So a way to start thinking about it is that something like two million women in 2024 voted for. Donald Trump for president because they were so upset at the Dobbs decision and he was the president at that time. That sets to me a major failure of civics instruction across the country. I mean. You know, he wasn't. Mr. Biden did not appoint the Supreme Court justices. People need to know enough about how government functions. So that they vote in a way that's consistent with what they actually want to accomplish. The second concern is. I guess one way to start this is in the framework, George, that you presented for eighth grade. You have, second one is the development of government and the writing of the constitution. And the third is the institutions of government, how they function. And when I look at the eighth grade civics course, there's almost. And when I look at the eighth-grade civics course, there's almost none of that in there. And my concern is, you know, the, the writing of the Constitution is particularly important to all of us. And the, the way that the colonists, the recent colonists in seventeen eighty-nine realized they needed a more powerful government, but they really, really didn't want to have a king ever again. And they did certain things to make sure that there never would be a king. And then they also, and then they didn't, they felt the Constitution didn't quite get it right, so then they, they had a Bill of Rights. And these things are central to our country, is central to who we are as a country. You know, the Bill of Rights says, you know, that the government shall be not, shall do nothing to interfere with people's right to speech, the protection from arbitrary detention, habeas corpus, you can't be put in jail without getting before a magistrate. And then, in terms of no kings, that, they didn't want one person to be all-powerful, so they deliberately put the, the process of funding the government in the hands of the legislature. And they said that it was the job of the president to, to, to carry out the laws, but it says nothing in Article Two. Sorry, it's Article One that the legislature's given, the Congress has given the power to, to fund, and that Article Two says nothing about the president's power to make the budget. How is that working out today? I mean, if, if, it doesn't, when I hear, when I listen to what you said about the grade-eight civics course, it doesn't sound like there's anything about the Constitution. Do, does a graduate of North Andover High School have an understanding of, of what habeas corpus is? And would he or she understand that there's some contradiction between that and the government grabbing people off the streets and putting them in jail? I mean, I understand these things are really political, but isn't that what civics is about? Is understanding our government, where it came from?
Mr. Moskovich, I, I can assure you that our kids are learning about the roots of the government right now as my kids are at home taking some notes on the Enlightenment and the roots and the foundations of how the Enlightenment shows up in, in the government.
Let them comment, Joe.
Well, I, I, actually, I think I need to say this. As an educator and as, as a school committee, our job is to make sure that we teach to the frameworks, and we know those things are in the frameworks. And we know that the curriculum that they're using, the Democratic Knowledge Project or iCivics or all the things that we're using align to those things because we've adopted those and chosen them or we've recommended them. So I'm sure, like, from this point of view, I know that our kids and their teachers are doing that work. And please share some more information. But one of the other things we have to keep in mind is that our job is not to teach kids how to make those choices or where those contradictions might, we can identify where contradictions could exist. But like, our wonderful seventh-grade teacher told us, like, the ability for them to make claims and use evidence to support those claims and to look at all the different things that come out of that and why that could be happening is, is that's what we're supposed to be teaching kids, not one political viewpoint or the other. And frankly, we could go back to other moments in U.S. history where people have done the same thing and it changes over time, and that could be, that's a whole other thing, but-
You're putting words in my mouth.
Those are the things that you were alluding to, so I'm, I'm putting my own words out there.
Perfectly happy. All I expect is that, that students should understand those issues. And I understand that we-
I believe they do.
I understand that we can't tell them, or shouldn't tell them, what to think about it, but I think they should be aware of it.
And you can look at data, too.
You make a good point, Mr. Moskovich. And please know, we, we teach kids how to think. We do not teach kids what to think. And teaching the Constitution, as Mr. Hicks outlined, that is in the frameworks, and we are responsible for teaching the frameworks. And Mr. McGravy can certainly do a better job of me of highlighting how they teach the Bill of Rights and when and, and the Constitution. But we do teach those pieces as they are in the frameworks, and it is in our curricular resources.
And I would say all your concerns, Mr. Moskovich, that you have are addressed in the frameworks. Like, everything that you were questioning or thinking isn't being covered in North Andover?
I just asked whether it is covered.
Well, no, well, I thought, it sounded like you were saying it wasn't being covered. Maybe I misinterpreted it. I'm sorry.
I'm saying, what I'm saying is that when you went through the highlights of the grade-eight civics course-
Right, they were highlights.
And, well, okay, that's why I asked the question. It, it isn't, the, the, the writing of the Constitution isn't in this list. But that's why I'm asking you the question.
It fits into the category. So this was, I didn't want to put every single framework standard on there, but if you go into the frameworks and you look at it, everything that you're concerned about is in the frameworks, and those are what we base our units of study around. So literally, Constitution, Bill of Rights, the failure of the Articles of Confederation, Shays Rebellion, the writing of the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, habeas corpus, all those things that you were concerned about.
The Declaration of Independence.
Everything, we, we cover everything. Those, I, what that slide basically was, was just a little snippet of some of the things. And if you looked at the bottom and said, and much, much more. Because I didn't want to have to spend, you know, like, eighty, ninety slides on it. So those things are definitely being taught by my, my two colleagues and I.
So I, I understand it's politically delicate. Would they be aware of the sort of contradiction between what's written there and what's happening now? I mean, we don't need to tell them or shouldn't tell them what they should think about it, but there, there's clearly a contradiction.
Well, I mean, I think for us as eighth-grade teachers, they're just beginning the process of, of, of learning these things. And sure, we can bring some things in, but we do have a lot of things to cover throughout the year. And I, it is the hope that the kids take those things that they learn, and then as they get older, they will be responsible and informed citizens, and they will be questioning things or talking about things that maybe don't work well. I know that Ms. Ando focused on the TikTok thing. Obviously, kids are looking at the two sides of that. Should we keep TikTok? Should we make it go away? Those different types of things. Those are things that we try to weave in.
I think you want to remember just what Mr. McGravy said, that you're talking developmentally about students who are, you know, sixth and seventh grade. So if you recall the slide that had, what did you hear in the news? And how does that connect to the Constitution and the structures of government that we've studied? That's a way that it allows the teachers to hear what the kids are thinking and what, what, what they've heard in the news. And then they have a conversation and how, just what I said. How does this apply to the Constitution, the structure of government? It's sort of that sounding board or it's that, you know, quick start to class to be able to make that connection. So, so yes, the answer to the, is that, is lots of, that times, yes. But we also are developmentally appropriate for where our students are and connecting to the standards. But there's lots of opportunity for students to come into our schoolhouse, this middle school or the high school, and bring things forward and ask for clarification from their educators and, and where does that fit? And then directly referring back to the standards.
That's very helpful. Could, could you, at some point, it's, I can't actually read that from here, but if you could produce, put those comments, something that we could read. Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
If Donald Trump changes the law that you can be president a certain amount of times, does that mean we'll be, he'll be able to run again because now the law has been accepted? Right? So there's an opportunity right there. That could be a lot of that conversation. But like-
I agree.
It gives kids that opportunity to say, this is what I'm hearing, this is what I'm questioning. And it also gives the educator that opportunity, I think was one of the slides that Ms. Ando had, about like sort of social media, what's propag, you know, what hasn't been said or this is, or, you know, quite frankly, not everything you hear on the news is true.
Pat, Sue, and Carrie, every year, impressed me with their ability to teach kids about politics in a way that is respectful of fam, of every, every family in this town while still challenging assumptions and making sure that kids have accurate information. They do it with grace and courage because I can tell you, it can be very scary, especially during an election year, when a student asks you a question about a politician that you personally may or may not agree with, and you have to be very, very careful. And the courage and grace they bring to their classrooms during those conversations are very impressive.
And the responses to parents who quote what they believe was said or might have been said, or what they're reading, or what they were told. That's well said, Rebecca. Thank you for saying that. Pat, Carrie, and Sue do an admirable job.
Thank you.
So one thing I've noticed is that, having been fairly close to the state government for quite a while, that what people think is how it works, isn't how it works. Now, this is kind of tricky because you, you can teach what it says in a book, but often, I, I don't know how you do this, but it, the way it actually works is really quite different than, than what a lot of people think.
And I see that as, when you think about the skill development, a lot of times, students are being introduced to a lot of this for the first time in eighth grade. And to then be able to apply that information in new ways and to really understand the intricacies of governmental systems, that will come over time. And that's why it's so important to be introducing this as early as possible so they can know. Because prior to civics being taught in eighth grade, students had to wait until high school to get a lot of this information. And a lot of their ideals and thoughts and beliefs were almost formed. So the earlier the better.
So now it's six, seven? So I, I, it was there. I had to.
Really?
It was there.
Really? We don't get enough of that at the middle school.
Every time I'm about to say, you have six minutes left, I'm like, you have five minutes or eight minutes.
Five to eight minutes left.
Yeah, so you can't say anything in between anymore. It's gone.
For those of you that may be listening, it's just a middle school thing. About the number six, seven, it doesn't really mean anything, but it is something that they-
It is the word of the year, though.
A social media phenomenon.
Speaking of those two gr, earlier grade levels, I'm not gonna say it again.
Seven, six.
Seventh and the sixth graders. Well, I particularly thank you for, to the curriculum team and for, I think, I've been trying for many, many, twenty years to, to do inquiry-based curriculum with my own students. Thank you for going in, I think I just raised whole hog, whole hog with that. The questions that kids are asking and they generated on their previous two slide, of slides a couple of though. Yes, those, these. Your, the question for, it's a QFT, but like, their ability to do that and to, like, that, I mean, that idea of us knowing what questions are the right questions to even ask comes out of civically-minded people realizing in underserved and marginalized communities that parents didn't feel like they even knew where to start. And that's where that methodology comes from. So thank you for teaching that specific thing to our kids and allowing them to understand when we have, like, this is how we can go about trying to solve problems by asking the right questions of people to get their answers that we, we need. So thank you for doing that work with them. The, the questions that they're asking are spectacular.
I'm, I'm always, always impressed. They really, the first, like, couple of times we did this, I like, you know, I was like, oh, no. Like, how's this gonna go? Asking questions about a question, that's a little bit of a, you know, mind teaser. And after like, you know, two or three minutes of them just staring at each other like this, the, you know, the words started flowing once, you know, their brains had time to really process. And, you know, it, it's just, it's, it's really great. It's really great. And it's not just, I want to be like very clear, it's not just students that you would consider to be higher level or whatnot that can ask and do ask excellent questions. There are students at all reading and writing and math levels that are coming up with really deep, thoughtful ideas that push the thinking of our class forward.
I imagine it helps when they get to step two of investigating their SLIP pro in terms of how to do research that that-
Absolutely.
I hope so. Yeah, and that's, you know, and one of the reasons why there are less essential and supporting questions about government in sixth grade versus seventh grade. If you read a lot of the material that comes with the investigating history curriculum that's intentional in order to ramp them up for eighth grade.
Thank you. Any other questions about middle school stuff?
I'm just curious, the TikTok slide, the, the comments don't seem to be related to TikTok.
Oh, no, it's just a-
So that slide is just showing-
A chop talk.
That's showing a chop talk.
Oh, just the methodology. Okay, okay.
She just referenced the TikTok, which if you go through after the standards, you'll see the lesson plan.
There's a lesson in it.
It's a hyperlink and you can see the lesson.
Oh, okay, okay.
But their lesson is after the lesson.
They're not.
I got it. Okay. So that was just like-
We're saving slides.
I just wanted to say, you know, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. I know for me, when I think back of my education in middle school and high school, when it came around civics and government, I didn't, I, I didn't really know that I could question it until like high school or that first year of college. So the fact that the students are learning this much earlier, that you're allowed to question this, is amazing. So thank you for that work.
The reason I commented on that is because that's such a topical thing, right? That I would think it would, it would be a lot, especially at that age, a lively discussion, right? Like, that would wake everybody up, right? That, yeah. That's how I was so curious about it. So if I follow that link on the-
If you click on it, you'll see the lesson.
Okay.
You also have the lesson in your printed packet.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, anything about high school? I have one. The requirement for civic, civic action projects in the high school happens in eleventh grade. Is that embedded in a history course? And then what happens if kids aren't taking U.S. history, but they're taking one of the AP courses?
They do it there, too.
They do it there, too.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
I've often heard, too often heard the answer be, well, we don't know what to do with that yet. But I like that answer even better.
Yes. I feel like the call-in, the Mr. McLaughlin that I had the long conversation with teaches AP government. And so, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anything else for our lovely guests?
I just have one. I want to thank Mr. Gonzales. He is a veteran, and Veterans Day is coming up, so.
Thank you.
Very nice of you, Pam. Thank you. I'll be at the parade. Not marching in it, though.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Thank you, team. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Jacqueline, Social Studies for a Better World, great book that will help with the K-two stuff.
Exactly.
Life-changing.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're a little behind. Sorry. MCAS update. Mrs. Ando.
All right. And Kara's gonna be joining me for this one.
Hi, Mrs. Lawrence.
My daughter did the TikTok last year, and it was a fabulous opportunity because she was asking for all the social media, and we told her not till ninth grade. And it, it sold her. She was like, nope, I'm not gonna ask anymore. So it was very, very helpful, like, real-world, great connection.
Awesome. Thank you. Excellent. Okay. So our MCAS presentation for 2025, or our MCAS review, again, the, like I said, I sent you a little video ahead of time, but MCAS, there's piles and piles, and we could go on for a month about it. We won't. We are going to pick out a few things, and then if there's more information you want or need, we will absolutely get it for you. So first thing is Kara's going to do an accountability system review with us. Like, what do these scores mean? Where do they come from? How are they compiled? We are going to talk a little bit about just percent meeting and exceeding by grade spans. I have some slides for you about, you know, what percentage of our kids are meeting or exceeding the expectation. And then some longitudinal information, how do our kids do over time? Or how does the same group of students do if we follow them? And then there are some questions about comparable districts. So I, I did some digging on different ways to compare our district to others and have some information for you about that.
And so we'll listen to the whole presentation, and then we'll break it up into chunks again. We'll ask questions about the accountability data, and we'll ask questions about the meeting, exceeding data, et cetera. And then we'll talk about the comparable districts.
Awesome.
We'll focus questions into those three buckets afterwards to help focus the conversation a little bit.
Perfect. And I brought my favorite data person with me, who is Kara, to help us, who's going to give us a little review of the accountability system to start.
Lots of info, so I'm gonna try to break it down. I think one of the things as we kind of prepared for tonight was the idea of, when you go on the DUCY website, there's so many different links, there's so many different, you can like do a day-to-day for hours and hours and hours. So my goal is to try to break it down into, hopefully make some sense of all those different pieces to the puzzle. The first thing to know in the accountability system is there's actually six different measures. So we often think about MCAS as the way we're measured, but it's only one of the ways. The achievement and student growth for MCAS are two of the factors. And then we also take into account, or DUCY takes into account, high school completion rate and advanced coursework completion, and those only apply to the high school level. And then they look at their progress towards English proficiency, as well as chronic ab- as well as chronic absenteeism for our students in the district. So there's six different factors and even some of those have some sub-factors that are, are part of that calculation. Once DUCY looks at all of our, all of these different pieces to the puzzle and all these different measures, they look and sort schools into how much they are meeting their targets that are set. So on the next slide, I'm going to talk to you about what that target-setting process is. So again, the indicators are on the left that I just mentioned and then the different measures within those indicators. Each group or school or district has been assigned a path. DUCY looked at, for both 2024 accountability and 2025, they looked at the comparison of prior data. So in different measures, how have these groups or schools done in the past? Specifically for the MCAS data, they looked at the 2029 MCAS compared to the 2023 MCAS. And if a group or subgroup were on, did better in 2019, they were placed on a recovery path. So their targets were set in a way to work towards getting back to that 2019 or better for that data. If the students were doing better in 2023, they're put on, or the group of students, put on a path forward. And so their targets, the idea is that they should continue to progress, progress without maybe additional support. And so based on those targets, we then look at how we do in 2025. And points are awarded based on how well we did from 2024 to 2025. So if we decline in an area, zero points are awarded. All the way up to if we exceed past that target, four points are awarded. So all these different measures are awarded points based on improvement towards those targets or progress towards the targets. All right, next slide, please. All right, so the added details is that not only do we get awarded points, but in each of those categories, points are weighted or the, the progress towards, progress towards targets is weighted. And so if you look in that first column, the achievement for MCAS achievement, 12 points are available for non-high school grade level. So our grades three through eight students, if we look at, we look at all of the students, they can earn up to 12 points and that is weighted 60% of that column. So we also look at, in high school, those additional measures. So you'll see that that same achievement, that first row across, for high school students, including a group with our English language learners, there's still 12 points available, but it's only weighted 40% because there are other measures included within that group, that column. So we look at non-high school and the district lens, we look at our non-high school schools, so grades three through eight, and then high school. And then within each of those categories, DUCY also focuses in on our lowest performing students. Who are the students that didn't do as well? Were in the bottom 25% in the prior year. And they are also awarded points towards their targets. We're really trying to zoom in on the students that we know need additional support, perhaps to make progress. So four different categories, lots of different weights within those. And then for our district accountability, all of that is also weighted. Our high school weight is 34% and then the non-high school is 66%. So lots of math. One more piece. Once we get all those numbers, to get the cumulative percentage and our, our final overall result at the end, we look at, thank you, Mr. Hicks, 2024 data accounts for 40% and 2025 data accounts for 60%.
This all goes here and this one goes to here and these two go to here?
Those two would go to, yep, either of those two, yes.
This is the way to evaluate everybody.
Uh-huh. Yep, so there's a lot of, so again, we like talk MCAS, look at MCAS data, know there's so many other pieces that go into this. And a lot of it is, right? How are we doing? How well are we moving students in these different categories? Are they making their targets? So every year, there, it's really two pieces of data, two years of data that is going into our overall accountability.
So the idea that if there's a very good year or a very bad year, it's, it's weighted, you're sort of weighted in two-year increments?
And the more recent years weighted heavier.
Is, yes.
So the idea that we should make amazing progress each year overall is not really possible.
It's messy, messy. So if you...
Takes time.
Yes. On the next slide, you'll see an example. So I want to go through, what does this data, what are these targets? What are we actually looking at? So this is an example of our grade three through eight ELA MCAS. And on the left of this chart, you can see all the different student groups. So we have our all students at the top and then various student groups, subgroups below that. A column for their 2024 achievement because we're comparing that to our 2025 achievement. And then you can see that target. So for all of our students in grades three through eight, they were on the recovery path, meaning that they had done better in 2019 than 2023. And last year in 2025, they missed their target by .07. So they didn't reach that five, 501.7. They declined, sorry, they missed their target but also declined from the prior, previous year. And that is their average scaled score on MCAS.
The target would have been...
Yes, so the target was that 501.7.
Which is sort of the, the waypoint on the way to the 2029 goal?
Yes.
And that's assigned by the state?
Mm-hmm, yes. The state decides all of the targets. And so...
This isn't the same students, this is...
Correct, which is, and we'll get to that a little bit later. Correct.
It's, it's, students in that grade this year do better. So it's kind of helpful to realize you're not actually looking, okay, thank you.
Yep. And so you can see with each of those subgroups whether they were awarded points. So the lowest performing group, as we mentioned, that is their own column on that previous graph, did meet their target and exceeded their target. And so they earned four points compared to our all students group that earned zero points. So every single subgroup has this data available. In DUCY, you can kind of look up all those pieces. You'll notice there's some blanks because if a subgroup is too small, that group is not, doesn't have a target and isn't included and measured. All right, so that's a little example of those target setting. So this, again, hard to read all these numbers. The main idea is when DUCY looked at all of our data for 2024 and 2025 for the district, so this is all, all students across the district and all those percentages that we had before. For 2024, our, the percent of targets we met was 35%. That's the column on the left, the top. That is the 40, weighted 40%. So right under the 2024, above the red box are the two numbers. So we earned 35% of our targets in 2024. And in 2025, we met 32% of our targets. And so the combined weighted 40, 60% brought us to 33% of our targets met, which is deemed moderate progress towards our targets. So that's our district data.
100% would mean that when they took where we were in 2019 and where they expect us to be in 2029, that we were on that path.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And again, lots of exceeding the targets in order to get those fours to have that weight.
Right, but, but, so what that means in effect is that we only came...
Mrs. Moskowitz, I'm not sure I understand either.
Turn it off. So, but basically it means, okay, so we didn't really, we, we only went a third of the way to the waypoint, which means we were way far of...
There is more points left on the table, as I like to tell my kids when they don't get hundreds on things. There is, there's some opportunity to do better, absolutely. The next screen just shows the, the, a school accountability. So this happens to be Sargent School, again, same mechanism in place. And you'll see, again, Sargent had 71%, met 71% of their targets in 2024, 56% in 2025, which is why they're, they're, they're ranked, sorry, they met. Their weighted cumulative for the two years was 62% of their targets. And that placed them in their substantial, in the substantial progress toward targets category. On the next slide, I'm going in the right order, you'll see all of our schools. So up at the top in that red box, that is for the district. We were 33% moderate progress towards targets. Again, this is over the two-year. And then you'll see the school accountability percentage. So once a school, the accountability percentage is an additional factor. So once every school has their percent towards targets, DUCY then says, looks at similar schools and ranks them in order. So Sargent being 76 mean that they ranked higher than 76% of the schools that were similar to Sargent School. So high schools are ranked against other high schools, middle schools get it, it's middle schools. So there's the, what is the percent towards target? And then we have that categorization or kind of sorting that DUCY does to compare districts and schools.
Would you accept the categorization, the summary of this? Is the good news is we're doing much better than the rest of the state. And the bad news is that we're still not doing anywhere near well enough. The whole state isn't doing very well. And within it, we're at the upper end of not doing very well.
And I think one of the things that targets help is really where are we, where is it strong, right? If we have a four, we made some good progress towards that. It can help us identify, much like the state, if a, if a district or school isn't doing well, then they're going to target assistance for that, that district or school. And so as we look at all of our data across all of our schools, as Kristen will share, that really helps us identify where can we help and support. I think there's one, yeah, more. So this last one shows, again, the accountability percentile. So again, that's the comparison for each school from 2018 to 2025. You'll notice it does include Kittredge, we do have data on Kittredge. It is not necessarily on all of the, the DUCY website. So because it is offline, it's kind of variable. Some places we go and look, it's there and sometimes it's not. We do have all that data, though, in district, even if it's, it's maybe not quite on a, a website from DUCY. So you can see the, the range for our different schools over the last, from 2018 to 2025. And then that colored column on the right shows each school's progress towards target, targets for 20, 2025 data. So many of our schools fell between 25% and 49th percent, which puts them in the moderate progress. And then two of our schools, Sargent and Thompson, fell both at 62%, which puts them in substantial progress towards targets. I'm helpful. Thank you.
Thanks to Kara, because this accountability percentile is a number that you're going to see when I compare districts. You're going to see this number a lot, like this, so this idea that we wanted to show you the complexity of like what this number boils down to, if that makes sense. So there are many factors and I think Mr. Moskowitz said it well, that we are doing relatively well compared to the state and we want to do much better or we would like to do much better. And the idea that like we, and you'll see that as we go on.
Kristen, on that last slide you were at, I don't know if I mentioned that the, the district does not get an accountability percentile. Schools get accountability percentiles, so that's why it's a little dash in that prior slide.
And that school gets, yes, exactly. So 33, we get progress towards targets on a district level. We get an accountability percentile on a school level. I'll use that number a lot, so as we go along. So just so you know what goes into it.
Can you say that one more time for Mrs. Cormier?
Sure, sure.
You had that quizzical look.
No, it's, the question just related to, so to make sure I understood the accountability percentile. So I think just key enough of something you said, Mrs. Lawton, it's, so it's, we should, the accountability percentiles, it's assigned for that formula by DUCY against other like schools. So we shouldn't be comparing our schools to each other because I'm drawing a conclusion. Should we, I guess it's more of a question, should we be comparing our schools against each other or not? Because they're on different scales based on how DUCY classifies them.
I honestly have never seen a list of our elementary, I haven't, I feel like I've seen, yes. But I think there's, in Dart, I think we can see which schools...
Two major categories are high schools and non-high schools, right? Like the idea that like when she says like similar schools, like our elementary schools, I feel like are all ranked within the same...
Within, I believe.
Within each other.
I went to look at some of this afternoon.
So non-like schools similar to the Sargent, but schools that serve similar grades across the state.
Okay, so our school, these are like, our schools are likely all, our elementary schools are likely all in that same range. So you could, if it was appropriate, compare...
We can do some, some digging. I went to check something this afternoon and the website with all the profiles is down right now. So I couldn't check, so I can't check right now, or I would, but we'll do some digging and double check.
We do have comparables to schools that are not just same grades, but are like us later in the presentation.
Yeah, 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 correct.
That was a clarifying question.
Yes, but it's safe to say that the Atkinson, Franklin, Kittredge, Sargent and Thompson are ranked on the same scale.
Okay.
And so, and like what is sticking out is that the, the Atkinson, we clearly need to, there's some attention that needs to be paid there, there's some digging that we need to do. That accountability percentile is much lower than we'd like it to be and much lower than our other schools. And so absolutely, but I think it's fair to say that we, our five schools are ranked on the same scale.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to understand these as we move into the next one, so thank you.
Of course, no, thank you.
A helpful way to think of it is I assume that they put whatever the, the progress towards, like in a column in a spreadsheet.
And then rank them?
And one way to do it is you can use the percentile function. And the other way you can do it is you can sort them by top to bottom and you look at where you are in that.
So effectively, if we took every school, put them in a line, this is how they would, this is how we would fall. Now, the high school wouldn't be in the same line as our elementary schools, right? But the idea that like, yes, like so, but I feel like like schools, because that can be interpreted lots of ways, is by who gives the same assessment, like is it elementary or is it a high? Thank you, all right. My friends, the next set of slides are several slides about achievement levels. So the graphs look similar. If we are blue or green, that means we are exceeding or meeting where we would like to be. Yellow or red, partially meeting or not meeting. Here's how ELA data three to eight looks compared to the state and grade 10 looks compared to the state. Many people will ask, you know, are we above the state average? We are. I think we are still, you know, hovering at about a 50%, 60% rate of exceeding or meeting. We'd like to, we'd like to do better than that. Here's math. Oh, sorry, here's ELA by each individual grade level. Again, we have some peaks in some grade levels, but for the most part, we're about halfway exceeding or meeting. Here's the same data over time. So the blue bar represents 2022, the red bar represents 2023 across grade levels. So the blue bar in the third grade section is the same kids as the red bar in the fourth grade section is the same kids as the yellow bar in the fifth grade section and the green bar in the sixth grade section. So we can see how students do over time or we can, let's give us a picture of ELA, how a group of students performs over time.
Just say that a little more slowly.
So let's, let's take the, in the third grade blue group, in 2022, they were like 58, they were 58%. And then that same cohort, which is mostly but not quite 100%, the same students, were at 54% in third grade and 47% in fifth grade. And then in sixth grade, they went back up to 54%. Do I have that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We would love to see a tick upward as long, the longer our kids spend in school, we don't have that consistently. So the idea that we, what we would love to see is our kids to do incrementally better, the longer that they are with us.
And within, so this is different groups of fourth graders over four years.
Yep, we'd want to see that go upward as well. We want to see everything going upward.
This along the way and this along the way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I just have a comment about the 10th grade.
Sure.
I had, I didn't realize this until I started working with data statewide. But in general, the tests seem to be scored at about the same rate. But every year in Massachusetts, there's a miracle, which is that between eighth grade and 10th grade statewide, students get way more proficient. Now, that is, of course, one interpretation. There's another interpretation, which is, it is... There's another interpretation, which is, it isn't scaled in the same way. Who knows? You sort of get in the weeds when you start going behind that.
Absolutely.
But it, this isn't, this isn't unique to our
No.
Our district, no.
Math, similar. Again, blue and green exceeding and meeting compared to the state. Three to eight on the top, grade ten on the bottom. Here's where we are in math. Here's where we are by grade level. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten.
Higher than reading generally, right?
Generally higher than reading, yes. So, if we want to take a look at math compared to reading, probably higher, a little more consistent in math.
Yeah, and then what, there's a one grade where it's sort of significantly higher. Wasn't that around fourth, fourth or fifth, where there's quite a difference between the two?
In math or reading?
Yeah, yeah, thirty-eight, oh, who knows? Fifth and seventh grade, it's quite low in reading, but not in math. Go figure.
Again, students over time. Same thing, like, so our third graders, sixty-four percent. Those same third graders became fourth graders, sixty-six percent. Moving to fifth grade, fifty-five percent. Moving to sixth grade, fifty-two percent. So, in that particular cohort.
They got better from third to fourth.
They got better from third to fourth.
Right, and then they started slipping.
And then they went down. Another way to look at it. Kara put this graph together of our, so up at the top of the chart, you'll see twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. The first year taking MCAS. That first, that first column, the first blue column is our grade twelve students who are graduating twenty-twenty-five, or the ones who just graduated, sorry, are grades twelve students. So, you can see how they performed. Grade three, grade four, grade five, grade six, grade seven, grade eight. And so, you could see like, same group of students over time. There are, this is in your packet too, and I can ask Michelle, I can print it larger.
Which color is that one on the graph? No, I see it there, but on the graph, which color is it?
So, the colors match, yep.
This is a dark blue.
Okay, so they were sixty-five percent in third grade, and then they fell in fourth grade, went up in fifth, and then down in sixth, but then it doesn't go farther than. Does it come out the other end? Oh, I see. Oh, I'm sorry.
Why is there a blank, why is there a black box? Oh, yeah, that was the year they canceled it.
Black boxes from COVID. Yes, exactly. And so, again, like, there is like a fractured line graph on the other side that has breaks in it because of COVID. Also, there isn't, there isn't, we don't test kids between, although Kara skipped it, grade eight to grade ten. We don't test kids in grade nine generally. Or if we do, we report them in grade ten. And so, and so, you can see, like, we would want a steady trend upward. Each one of these lines, you would want as a steady trend upward. That's not the result that we have. We are, we are, in some grades, we are bouncing all over the place. In some grades, we have a steady trend downward. But in few, there are few places where we have a steady trend upward, which is what we'd want.
Well, the main steady trend upward is the one we talked about it a minute ago.
Between grade eight and grade ten.
Yeah, so if you ignore that, generally, they're lower in grade eight than they were in grade three.
I'll ask it when, at the end.
You sure? Go ahead. Okay. Awesome. Here's math, same information with math. Now, if you look at the two line graphs, the math one is slightly more consistent looking, right? But again, here we are with, you know, in our, our current, or it's our twelfth graders that just graduated. Grade three, seventy-eight. Grade four, fifty-nine. Grade five, fifty-nine. Grade six, sixty-four. Grade eight, thirty-six, and then grade ten, sixty-seven. And so, you can check, you could see trends over time with our students here. And again, the table colors match the line colors on the graph. Science, achievement by grade level. We test in five, eight in high school for science. So, you can see the results here compared to the state. And same thing, overtime. So, our fifth graders at fifty-four percent become our eighth graders at fifty percent, become our high schoolers at sixty-three percent. Am I reading that right, Kara?
Nope, because it's like a three-year gap. So, I'd have to, I'd have to do some more math to figure out where that.
Got it. Okay, so the fifth graders. Those fifth graders.
Three years between and then two years later. Yeah, blue is the green. Eighth to high school typically is because our high school students take biology as freshmen. So, usually it is, they take it in eighth grade and then biology as freshmen. So, those would be like fifty-one to sixty-one.
But you can't go from here to there.
A difference, though, between them is fifth and eighth tested, test on life science, physical science, and our science and technology, where high school is only biology standards. So, there, again, definitely a difference in those, in those tests.
Civics, gave the first civics exam. Or we didn't give the first one, but the first one that we got data reported on in the, so you just heard from our civics team. Here's how North Andover is doing in civics compared to the state, as far as meeting and exceeding. And I don't, we don't have longitudinal data about civics. We've only taken it once. This is another measure. When Kara talked earlier about several different measures, one being advanced coursework, the percentage of students that are enrolled in eleventh and twelfth grade in advanced coursework. That rate was sixty-nine point eight in twenty-twenty-four, moved to seventy-nine point four in twenty-twenty-five, but still improved below target. So, you can see our different subgroups there.
I don't understand.
Wait, didn't we exceed the target?
I don't know.
Target is seventy-three point two.
They might be. We'll bring you back to that one. Kara's going to work on it live. My friends, compare, districts that we compare ourselves to. So, I thought of this a couple of different ways. So, there's a lot on this. I know there's a lot on here. I understand. But the idea that it's printed in your packet, but also, these are those school accountability percentiles, where we boiled each school down to this one number. So, here's North Andover. Here are seven schools, are seven numbers. You can't necessarily average the numbers as far as they go, because we have different schools. And so, I had, I put them all on here. But as far as geographically, here are our communities that are around us, and how their schools are performing compared to our schools. And so, you'll see the city is Lawrence, Methu, and Haverhill. Then you'll see Andover, Newburyport, Hamilton, Wenham. And so, just, some people like to compare us regionally. And so, you can get a look at how we are comparing regionally to the schools around us. This is a lot of information. It's also in your packet, but I just pulled the high schools as well, figuring everybody ends there. And the eight to ten phenomena that Mr. Moskovich was talking about exists everywhere. So, this is another way to compare. There's North Andover High at sixty-seven as a percentile rank. If something's blue or green, they're doing better or significantly better.
You used the colors from before.
Exactly. If, yes, if, no problem. If they're yellow, they're doing, they're, they're ranking lower than us. And so, you can get a look at who's around us geographically and where we're falling in that range. I think Mr. Moskovich said it well, that we are like, doing remotely well in, in a state that's not, that we have large amounts of students who aren't, who aren't meeting or exceeding. But we do compare ourselves to some of these surrounding communities. So, here we are at the high school level. And again, if it's green or blue, significantly better than us. Okay. Comparing districts, the DESI use the District Analysis and Review Tool, called the DART, to compare us to other districts. Now, we wouldn't necessarily immediately compare ourselves to these districts, but they are districts of similar size, have similar low-income levels, have similar students with disabilities, and have similar percentages of ELs. Those communities are Ashland, Bridgewater, Rainham, Chelmsford, Danvers, Easton, Foxborough, Marshfield, North Attleboro, Tewksbury, and Wakefield. Now, again, most people wouldn't necessarily consider those comparable districts of ours, but they really are like, enrollment-wise, they're close to our size, but have very similar low-income students with disabilities and ELs. So, this is like the district analysis data. Now, this is for the whole district. We could also pull these numbers by school. And so, here's, here we are, and here's where we fall. And to make it a little easier to look at, and I didn't make these the right colors, Mr. Hicks, but I will. But the idea that here's North Andover, and here's our schools. And demographically, these are the schools that are similar. Chelmsford, Danvers, Tewksbury, Wakefield on the North Shore, Bridgewater, Easton, Marshfield, North Attleboro, Foxborough, and Ashland in different parts of the state, and these are their school accountability percentiles. I just pulled the middle in the high school. Oh, the town manager gives us a list. So, to compare some more, the town manager gives us a list of comparable districts based on income, based on tax rates, based on similar spending per pupil. And these are the towns that the town manager gives us as comparable. Danvers, Beverly, Stonem, Tewksbury, Wakefield, Wilmington, North Andover. This is where we fall in the middle school rankings, and this is where we fall in the high school rankings compared to our surrounding communities that are economically similar. A lot of comparing. I think it's helpful. And I, I just think across all of our comparisons, I, I don't think anybody would disagree that we're not doing as well as we would like to do, or we're not getting the results that we would want to get for our students overall. This test isn't everything, but it is something to pay attention to. And so, from there, I will stop. Do you have questions? Or what questions do you have?
Clarifying question. Some comparables, it's state, like, according to the state, who are we like? According to our, our neighbors.
So, absolutely, like, geographically, who's nearby, right? And then according to the state.
Who are we like?
Who are we like population-wise?
Population-wise.
And then according to the town manager's list that she goes to over time to look at different things, all sorts of different ways. How to compare those.
This is more economically, yeah. This has nothing to do with education. This list has nothing to do with education, what our school, this is our town, our tax base, all of those types of things.
Absolutely.
Interesting that there are a couple that appear in all three.
Yes, yes.
So, we shouldn't be, oh, that's one more question. Go stop. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Ando. Let's go back to questions about the account, and I will say commentary, as a comment. You explain the accountability system very well.
Yes, exactly.
Like, that does, like, can I steal your slides?
Right, lots from the state, just little things.
For like, just the way you told us like how it works. Thank you.
However you got it, it was very clear.
The best accountability presentation I've ever seen about what it is.
Well done.
You stare at that data for the first time, and you look at it, and you go, I don't know how to make any sense of this at all. So, that was really helpful. So, an interesting question is, did DESI make it complex for some reason? So, there's no answer to that.
Actually, my first question is all about that.
Questions about accountability system first.
Yeah, so, so, you know, when you look at data, you try to interpret, like, what can I learn from this, right? What, what, what does this mean to me? And I, if, yeah, there you go. So, so, the one that had attendance in it is where I wanted to go. There it is.
This one?
Was the MCAS target, and then I did update the chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, this, 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 this slide here. So, so, you know, obviously, kids aren't here. They're not going to do well, right? I'm trying to, so when you get, when you get a result out of this that says, hey, our accountability didn't meet its target, and you want to go figure out why, right? That's, kind of jumps out to me as like probable, probable cause, that's a bad word, but whatever. A probable cause, right? So, how do you, how do you interpret that and figure out what to do about it? That's really the question.
More data.
So, there's all these different pieces, right? Now, what do you do?
In general, or the chronic absenteeism?
Well, I particularly want to know about that one, but in general, too.
So, some of the data we've pulled the last few years is trying to look at, who are those students and where are they? So, Cheryl Barzac, as you've met many times, and her nursing team is fantastic, because they keep really detailed data and also look at it regularly. So, I've been in meetings with many of them, sharing out data, kind of helping them know, you know, is the data we're looking at. They're the accurate and reliable. Power School does a pretty good job of having that data for us, our SIS system as well. Last year, I met at the middle school, we had a little group with our AP, one of our APs, Caroline Beasley, and again, nurses from there, and some of the guidance counselors trying to look at, again, that idea of, you know, who's out, why are they out? Really, it's about knowing those kids, right? I think in elementary, you have your homeroom teacher, a smaller group. As a parent who had daughters, like, you know, it was really immediate. They knew real fast. Middle school and high school, you have more students. We have our APs and our nursing staff and our teachers, but they might see many teachers. Did they just miss part of the day? Did they miss all the day? So, I think it's really having that data and then being really hyper-focused on it to make sure that we know who are the kids most at risk. Sometimes it's bringing in the parent liaisons to help support, right? Is there, is there a reason? I've heard of lots of stories of, you know, maybe it is students having trouble getting to school, waking up, and that our parent liaison sometimes are helping those families get kids out of bed. You know, it's not always easy as they get older. So, I think it's knowing that data so that, at the end of the year, we're not surprised by what that, that number is. I think we've, we gained some accountability points. I can't remember if it was last year or the year before around that. And I think, again, we're kind of steady. We're not, I was looking specifically at some of the data. We are in a decent range, I'd say. We don't have a, as they, as students get older, again, middle school and high school, as you maybe expect, there are more absences. We don't have a high percent based on neighboring communities that might, I think, just statewide, there's a lot around this piece, because we know if kids aren't in school, they can't learn.
And this includes the, every, all the students in school?
Yes.
So, it's not just looking at students who take MCAS. So, you have, so, when looking at chronic absenteeism, you have to consider your whole school. So, our principals do have a threshold that they, they look to, and we have attendance letters that will go home saying that your student is, you know, is becoming, close to becoming chronically absent, or, you know. But it's also looking at those, those measures of not looking at it punitively. You know, how can we help you? Like, how can we get your kids to school? What are some of the things that we might be able to do, just like Kara said? The guidance counselors, Michelle O'Leary, our Director of Social Emotional Learning, is looking at that Cheryl Barzac and the group of, of teachers. But definitely, I think our principals are looking, are more concentrated on looking at the data of all students. And I don't, you know, that's also why we are tough sometimes when families say things like, you know, I'm going to take a vacation for a week. Can, can we have some work? And that it doesn't, you know, it's two things. One, you can't really replicate some of the things that are happening in the classroom. And, and two, that's not the message. And it's hard, because, you know, we understand that sometimes things come up, but we do push back on some of those things with our families.
And then a generic question, like, okay, so you have this data, so chronic absentee is one part of it, and these are other parts of it. So, how do you figure out, again, like, what to focus on to, to, to try to make it better?
It's funny, as we were preparing, last year, we had all the principals in a room. We really kind of dove in and looked at it. And this year, we have had conversations with them, but we've also gotten really detailed, like, looking at the DIBELS data and working with our teachers on that. So, it kind of shifts each year how we work with this. But I have met with different principals. I think Jaclyn and Joe, my colleagues, have as well, met with teacher teams to really hone in on it. A lot of it, too, I know, the middle school's talking about, what's that data literacy? Do teachers know enough? And how do we help support them understand all of this? Because it is a lot, right? And you think of the middle school, every single student is taking at least two MCAS at the middle school. High school, advanced coursework, we, we, I think it was two years ago, looked at, you know, is the list? It felt like the list maybe wasn't accurate. We did some digging. Are we reporting the right students? So, sometimes there's that wondering, you know, asking those good questions.
And it's also changing our narrative a little bit. I think if, just if you go back to the chronic absenteeism, after COVID, we would say things like, if you're coughing, please stay home. If you have a sniffle, please stay, stay home, right? But it's now changing that narrative to, again, to, you can come to school with a with a little sniffle. Like, if you don't, you know, if you have a fever, you need to stay home, or if there's something else. But it's, it's definitely, that's been. But it's, it's definitely, that's been challenging, having been a building principal. That was really hard because we sort of gave one message and then we wanted to switch and give the other message. And then it's also of, people are still have concerns about if I send my child to school when the school is sort of going through the flu season or the, or something like that, could they be potentially bringing things home? So it's sort of combating that a little bit too.
And I think another answer is more data, right? Kara said that at the beginning, like the way we, because the idea that we could have thing, we have things by school level, grade level, teacher's classroom. We have item analysis. I mean, there's so many pieces. And so we just dig deeper to be able to try to find out. And we, we bring in the people to, you know what I mean, to take a look at it. This number doesn't help us a lot. This number compares us to everyone else. But there are mechanisms to get much more specific data that actually is useful to principals and teachers.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions, more questions on accountability system itself? Great. Questions about the achievement data?
So when I'm, when we're looking at the historical data on ELA and math, what I'm wondering, and we, I don't think we have this piece fully yet, is when we start using those HQIM? So looking at like ELA, so class of 2034. So we've got one data point and we don't know how that's going to progress. Right? So I'm understanding that correctly. And then same thing with math, right? When do we start using Eureka?
So 2017, I believe, was the first year of the original Eureka. And now we're in year one of Eureka squared.
Okay. So just, I'm just trying to figure out what graduating class is that?
You mean which color lines?
Yes.
That's a really good question.
Yeah. So if you look at the red line. If they took MCAS in 2017, they would have had one year of Eureka. The yellow would be two, green would be three. I'm trying to figure out where they were, what grade they were in. Because they would have had it like third, fourth, fifth perhaps, and then switched. And now we need to look at, what was the middle school using and when were they using it? So it's a tricky part of like-
It'd be interesting to see those fundamental events on these.
Yes, yes.
So that makes the biggest difference between third grade. So maybe what you could start with is look at the third grade column. And it looks like generally, I could be wrong, but it looks like the ones that are higher started after the adoption. If I have that right, then it would mean that it, it worked from K to three.
So if you read across a row.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying.
Oh, in, yes.
K to three is critical. So we put in a much better curriculum.
That they started as kindergarten.
So let's look at which order did those students, when we look just at the grade three column, which is the, the, the ones that were before, like the 40%? Were they, so, so that's 2025. Does that mean that they're some of the most recent? That would be depressing if you see what I'm getting at.
It's the opposite. So they were, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Same thing.
They would have been the ones that didn't have Eureka in third grade.
Oh, okay.
That's a great point.
So 2017, they had Eureka in third grade, is that right?
But they wouldn't have had it in K1, too.
Right.
So they would have jumped into. And I think too, I need to go back and remind myself when MCAS has also shifted. So that test each year has looked different. I know when we look at science data, for example, there's the legacy MCAS. And so we, they literally say, don't compare your legacy MCAS bio data to your new MCAS because it's so different. So it's hard when we go back historically because again, there's so many, there's additional vagabonds, scientists can't leave those hell.
And what it means to pass.
Yes.
Changes.
That's some of the, yeah.
So like the threshold is different.
Threshold, the scaled score. So there's, I think it's, it's tricky. I, I-
And we don't want to explain it away.
Yeah. So when we're looking at, okay, so 2021, well, they didn't take it in third grade. So 2020, oh, there's, wait, we have two 2021s.
Yes, because they both took MCAS for the first time in 2021. So the orange column, they were third graders. My daughter left home, did not take MCAS, were sitting at home in spring of 2020. So her first time taking MCAS was spring of 2021 as a fourth grader.
But, okay.
But at the same time, the year below her, our current eighth graders took MCAS as third graders. So they have not had, so our current eighth graders and younger have not had a gap in their MCAS experience.
Okay.
So does that mean we want to go from left to right?
So if you want to look at how has third grade done, yes.
Yeah, so the light blue and the right.
Yeah, is the-
They, they, they were in third grade.
Last spring.
But that, that's the class that had K through third.
Yeah, so they were at 54.
Okay.
And the classes before them were 58, 55. So which one of those had the new curriculum? How far to the left do we have to go to get the new curriculum?
So that's, that's what I was just asking. And so 2021 was the first class that had it K through three. Had all three, right?
Trying to remember when that we started.
Okay. So that's unfortunate, but their score is rather low. On the other hand.
But they also are the students so- That went through COVID, right? So just remember that they were students who had disrupted learning.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, exactly.
Which also adds another layer.
Right, 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 right.
There's a lot of different variables.
Yes, yes, exactly.
But I like the idea that like maybe going forward, having kind of those fundamental events where we're investing as a district, because this is the right thing to do, to see where, where would we expect those pivots to come from having HQIM and those different pieces, you know, just kind of as we go through and do this year over year?
I'll also pull the research around implementation dips where like, where you're, where people are learning and teachers are learning anew, you generally have an implementation dip. So I'll pull that research too, of what we could expect. But absolutely great questions, like when did we, when did we implement? What group can we expect to see?
So Pam, you were saying, actually, the, the blue one, the 48, they were the ones that just had COVID before the test. So we can assume that that low score has relatively little to do with teaching and a lot to do with what they had just gone through.
It could be.
So I'm getting confused. So columns, columns are the same people, right?
Yes.
So the current, the people that graduated in 2025 were in 12th grade in 2025. Back in grade three, they had 78%. And in grade 10, they were 62.
Correct.
I'm reading that correctly. So columns are following a cohort. Okay.
Can I ask a different question? Please.
Sure.
Science? We, because it's bio, right? And it can be, but it's bio in North Andover. Is that the best choice? Would it be better, because it's such a language heavy, such a focused thing, would it be better if we switched to physics? I know provocative.
No, as a former chemistry teacher, I was glad they removed chemistry because that was always very challenging. Because the math can also be tricky for kiddos to, and the algebraic thinking. And there are districts that do physics first. I also taught physics at our high school. What I loved, and maybe my, my engineers will, will appreciate too. I think they're getting a kind of intro with their life science. We have a lot of students who move on to anatomy and physiology, environmental, AP biology, and don't take physics. Some do both. So our progression is biology and then typically chemistry as sophomores. And then they have lots of choice, which I've always loved. And our physics, we are, I think somewhat unique that we always said, wait till your senior year because you'll have the most math under your belt as possible. So explore different areas, take other electives. And we really, as a senior physics class, we have various levels. So you don't have to be in calculus to take physics. But it really provides a really good entry point that I think can help students find success if they go on to anything in college.
So what exactly is the choice that Mr.?
Is there, is there more you're going to say?
The, well, I think there, there's various reasons why. I think it would be a big shift. I also know that we, right now, we have one physics teacher and sometimes some of us were also able to teach other sections. I would worry, would there be enough physics teachers out there to fill that need? And we have a, a pretty strong biology team. We have a lot of life science certified teachers. So it would be a very big shift in our teaching staff if we were to make that shift.
Is the math that kids would need to do well on, in, on the physics MCAS versus AP physics or whatever type of physics is lower level?
It's different, yes.
Is that more in line with the math that they're learning in eighth and ninth grade anyway?
I have not looked in a while. I can look and see.
I'm just wondering in terms of like, because the biol, biology is such a content, language heavy.
Can I give a follow up on that?
Yes.
The approach, so we do have two teachers who are piloting Open Siad Biology, which is much like you heard from Rebecca around inquiry based and really having kids explore. It is a curriculum that really, yes, are we asking them to do some literacy skills and really apply and, and read and have that content there? But it is designed in a way where they're exploring some real life event, observable event, phenomena in science. And then they're understanding science with it. And so it can help shift. Fifth and eighth grade have added performance tasks to the MCAS, which again, the idea is that it's a simulation. Students go in, they experiment, there's kind of a problem that they're experimenting, they're collecting some data, and then they're answering questions based on what they run. So it's there, I love the direction the state's going and really opening up so that it isn't so language heavy or there's entry points for all students. So I'm hopeful that they are able to do that. And then what support do students need so that they can access?
What is the choice that Mr. Hicks was talking about?
So they removed chemistry. There was not enough districts that were offering chemistry as a, a high school science MCAS. So it is biology, a physics first, so an, an intro physics course. Or there's a technology engineering MCAS that students can take as well.
And we make a choice?
We do. Districts get to decide. And you could offer all. If a student moves in after their freshman year and maybe they're in a different class, then we, we look carefully at what would be a good fit. Do they have enough biology skills? What, what might they?
But does that mean that, sorry, just to follow up, does that mean that we can make a decision that our students will only take one test or another test?
Yes, and they only need to pass one. So we could offer several.
It's our choice. That we, we could let them choose the subject or we can say, you have to take physics.
So we, we design the program of studies and decide what would make sense because we offer it either ninth or 10th grade. So our students take biology as ninth graders and they take the test in ninth grade. If we were to do physics, it wouldn't work for our seniors in physics. They would have to be younger. And engineering has to be a full year course, which we have semester elective. So that isn't an option for us at this time because we don't have a full year engineering that meets the requirement that would go along with that test.
So the state regulations don't say it has to be bio. They say it has to be one of our tested subjects the first time they go through the thing.
Which means you can't really interpret a whole lot across districts because there could be testing totally different things, right?
Most do.
So if you notice in the slide though, it says biology because this, they are, we get the comparable to biology.
So we're comparing, we're comparing what we test.
So this is every other, yes.
Against those that test, okay, okay.
And we get, like Chris mentioned, the item analysis. We get how our students did on each question of the bio compared to every other student that took the biology test. So we do have that level of data.
It's a little better.
More on achievement. On slide four, I'm sorry, slide 12. It's getting late, my numbers are off. Slide 12. So that's the ELA slide. It actually does apply to kind of math and science too. But just a question, so the, I'm looking at these and, and for the various subjects too. It compares us, North Andover against the state. I think pretty much everything, we're, we're doing better than the state. How good do our students need to do to be able to be prepared to leave high school and be successful, right? Like looking at this, like, do, do we need to be all green meeting? Like what, what's our target? Like looking at this, because I'm like, comparing ourselves to the state kind of feels like we're setting the bar a little low. If, but the question is really like, what, where do we need to get our children to be successful when they're done? Like looking at just these colors, and is this a fair, should I be looking at this thinking that way?
No, I think it's absolutely fair. Our target would be that everyone would be blue or green. So that would, that would be what we would want for our students.
So that's the, when we're looking at this, we shouldn't, we're not like that.
The state wants to, it's why they give you your accountability data, right? So they want everybody to be falling within that blue and green.
Working towards that, right?
Working towards it. I think that it goes hand in hand a lot with like Portrait of a Learner or Portrait of a Graduate, which we'll talk a little bit about at some other point in time, but yeah.
So when we were preparing for the, the goals, the, the first task was, we'd like all our 80% proficiency, which seems to me like a reasonable idea. It's clearly not plausible next year. But kind of when we, you know, when we had the, the schools do their school improvement plans, that's what they said. They said, long run goal, 80%. And that kind of makes sense, right? It'd be nice to be 100, but it, it's not possible. You don't want to have a goal that you can't possibly meet. But 80% seems like a reasonable long-term goal.
I feel like in education world, whenever I looked at a test or looked at a group of kids, if I had 80% of my kids doing, being able to do a thing, that that was a, that was pretty good. Like that was like, if it was above that, awesome. If it was below that, then I had a, I had some work to do.
You know, I think we want to look at consistency. I mean, you saw the elementary schools, it's not consistent and that's something that we have to address.
Okay. Last questions on achievement before we move on to comparables, comparables? Questions about comparables?
So on the comparable, so we have the three different, yeah, we have the three different types. And I know in one of, so the geographic, just kind of what's nearby, the DART, and then just pure economic, how the town is built, tax base. We know another, sometimes we have other conversations, we talk about aspirational. So I'm looking at all of this and kind of lots of comparisons, like, what do we want?
Personally, I'm going to tell you, I think our aspirations are against ourselves. I mean, I don't know that I necessarily want to be aspiration. I mean, yes, I could say I want to be aspirational towards other districts, but much to what Mr. Moskovich said in terms of our principles, that we want to make a target that's attainable for ourselves. And 80% is a target that I think in a, like I, if you think about a strategic plan or you think about a goal, like a five year, three to five year plan. So I mean, if you want to be, if you want like, you know, what's my aspiration? Obviously my aspiration, you know, I aspire to be in 90%. But I think you have to take a lot of different things into consideration, right? In terms of what does that support look like? You know, I, I mean, I worked in one of these communities that has a, a very different, but I also had, you know, a different kind of support structure within my, my, my school building. And so I think, I think where the aspirational part can come to is in terms of also looking at the subgroups and our, and where are we saying that we have gaps in our, on our district in terms of, you know, maybe special education? You have a special education advisory committee right now, looking at our, our, you know, ML students. What I aspire to is having enough support and appropriate curriculum for all students to achieve. Sorry, I can't help myself sometimes with the teaching and learning.
Thank you for that answer, cause part of this is looking at this and like, I think, you know, I, I like the didn't compare. It's like, what do we, what should we be taking from the comparable? Definitely looking at the state, like, okay, we're better than the state, but we, we want to be better than that. So looking at this, I'm just kind of like, what, what should we?
And I'm not trying to be negative about anything, but the idea that, I think there's this idea that we're doing really well as a school system. And I think this shows you that, that idea probably isn't a hundred percent true. I would like to look like Andover. I would. You know what I mean? Like we're our lowest ranking is eighty-one. And we have this boss that used to work there, who's bringing these really great ideas, you know what I mean? Into, but the idea that like, I want like eighty-one to be our lowest school percentile, like that, you know? And absolutely, I want to meet everybody's needs and all of that. But I guess my point here is I really want, we aren't doing as well as we sometimes tell ourselves we're doing.
And, and looking at what those drivers might be, and when you think about it, right? So everything, I've said this before, I, I, I hope what the school committee and our community is seeing is that everything that we present here is trying to get us towards that, that budget, right? In terms of what we may need in order to support our students. And, or, or, yeah. And so when you look at things like even chronic absenteeism, right? So why aren't we getting the four points in chronic absenteeism? Like I want to say that that's something that we can work on. It's, it's achievable, it's attainable. But all the things that we're trying to build here, our school improvement plans, our district improvement plans, we don't think that we're meet, we don't think that we're showing the data that we could show. We're not making the sorts that we can, may potentially have impacts on things that you're going to see in FY twenty-seven.
So they will, we'll be able to see what are those programs that will, that will address these things? And then, you know, those programs obviously have to be funded, but we'll be able to see it by programs and know what those can impact.
That over times, things take time over time. And, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds too much about this, but it's also looking at what supports that work. And, and, you know, we talk a lot about student facing positions. I could also say that sometimes we think a student facing position is just a position where you have X amount of students in a classroom and you have a teacher sort of with them. But I do think that, you know, Cara is a very, you know, our curriculum sectors are very student facing positions. They're working directly with the educators and met sometimes directly with the students and supporting them in order to understand that curriculum, to bring the newest resources, to understand the, you know, the professional development. So, you know, it's, all of those nuances and all of those, you know, deter, like what we label as that, we need to talk about because that is important. You need the, you need the people, right? You need the, the Carol Lockums of the world that are going to be able to help you with that data, but also have the educational background and can bring in that new curriculum. I mean, you know, she just presented for, to the Department of Education. So, you know.
Yeah, I, I think, I was thinking about some of the comments we got last year, specifically around the parent liaisons and like what, what they bring to the table, which is a lot. That's my first position. Um, people question that, but if you have chronic absenteeism and you are starting to uncover like why we have that, teachers we know are overwhelmed with the stuff of the classroom. They don't necessarily have the time. So we need people who develop those relationships with parents and with kids who can then be the people who can start implementing the programs to address our chronic absenteeism. And that makes a significant difference in the quality of the education we're able to provide, right? Then we start to see our numbers go up. Like, those might not be counted as a student facing position.
Right.
But the things that they do are allowing our kids to get into classes to do the learning that they need to do. So it, it all comes back together and like, that's what we have to.
It's just unfortunate that they obfuscate, for lack of a better word, like it's really hard. I, I think it's really hard to figure out which in that accountability mishmash, matrix, whatever you want to call it. Right? How to, how to figure out which are the buttons to, which are the knobs to turn up, right? That's, that's the way my brain works, right? Like I want to turn up a knob.
And it might be a small group of students, right? Twenty, fifty, you know, enough to provide a number and a target, but it might not be where your most need is.
Yeah, or the most effective way to, to get that, whatever, mishmash number that, that, yeah, it's too bad that it's not.
And sometimes it is the group that you know you can make an action and, and see growth for them.
Yep. I have one. Does anyone else have any other questions? I have one last one. So whenever I look at data, I always ask like the three questions is what, so what, now what? So what is describing the data that we see? So what, why does it matter? Why is it important? We've done that. Now what is like, what are we, what are we planning? What are we going to do about it? Can you give us the short, what are we going to do about this? Cause it's not where we want to be. We're acknowledging it. We're being real and clear about it. But so what are we going to do?
I want to be really transparent. Is this not where we want to be?
Yeah.
You know, in the idea that, and I think, so that's the what, the so what, I think I could, I could extrapolate to. Our instruction is not as aligned to the standards as we would like it to be. Or as would get us to performing better. The idea that like, so what is, we're not where we want to be. So what would be, I would like our instruction to be overall K to twelve more aligned to the standards, um, not because they're measured in this test, but because their standards are what kids should be learning. And then now what, I mean, I think you've already seen our HQIM, our MTSS, like the idea that like, we have to get the best materials to our teachers to get in front of students so that we can be more aligned to the standards. And the same, doing the same thing we've always done is not going to get us to a different place. And so that's where, I bet, I feel like it's alignment to the standards and I feel like we are working really hard to get teachers' materials and training that they need in order to help kids develop those skills.
Can you say that last part again louder for the folks, training for the?
Is that, so we have to get the best materials and the best PD we can to teachers in order for them to be able to meet the needs of a really changing young population. In that like we, you know, we are, kids change every year. And so the idea that we always have to keep evolving in what we're doing. And so, um, there's a lot of work to do.
And I'm also going to say that I think our now what is, we now have to start thinking about, um, positions and, and support that we're, that we're providing in the schools. And not. I think as we develop in the professional development and as we are working through committees like the Special Education Advisory Committee and thinking about things like co-teaching and understanding what that looks like. For me, it's never about putting more people in a place that doesn't necessarily make anything better, right? You know, um, you know, if I'm cooking something and it doesn't, it's not going well, putting more ingredients of, or putting some of the same things in, putting the same thing that I put into it isn't going to necessarily make it taste better. It's just going to fill up the pot more, right? And I'm not, I don't want that to be misconstrued or anything, but we, we, it doesn't mean that I don't need different ingredients or it doesn't mean I don't need to go out and get something else in order to make this be a little bit better. And so to be, I just want to be really clear that the now what may mean that we need to invest in some different, um, you know, curriculum materials. Um, we may need to invest in some more staffing, um, but we need to have a plan for what that staffing looks like because just sometimes adding more people to it isn't necessarily going to make it better. And I, I hope that's the, you know, that's the track up that we're on with moving forward with a strategic plan and moving forward with, um, school improvement plans that are in line to our district improvement plans so that, and the work that, you know, Lynn has been doing and, and the advisory in terms of really taking a deep dive and looking at our programs so that we can, um, bring to our district the things that we maybe don't have yet, right? If we don't have specialized reading programs that we might need for, for some students and the NTRSS.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Much later than we anticipated, but really appreciate, and the data.
Important work.
Oh, we're at the superintendent's report.
Great.
We're only one twenty behind. Can you give us the quick north version?
Well, yes, and yes, yes and yes, and yes and no. Okay. I start off with something for you. So this week I have the great honor to go to the unified, yes, unified basketball team. So, uh, these are our students, um, who are part of, uh, basketball, but they're supported by some of their, um, peers and they're coached by the amazing Ms. Pinkston and Ms. Aleary. And this was a clinch, this was a, I don't know, on the edge of our seats game. It was forty-three to forty-three. Uh, so it was really great to be able to see that this week. Then moving on, here we are at the Atkinson School. Atkinson School's already had their Veterans Day Assembly. Um, their grade levels, they do a lot of patriotic songs. They had heartfelt poems. And then the Atkinson School invites staff, I mean, invites family who are veterans to come and be part of that. So here are some pictures of some of the students with their family members who are, uh, veterans. Our launch program, um, is working with the People's Pantry. Um, so the partnership between Launch and the People's Pantry in North Andover has started. People's Pantry is just, if you don't know, it's a volunteer run organization that serves the Merrimack Valley. Um, it's dedicated to supporting individuals and families who are experiencing food insecurity. Our Launch students are sorting, organizing, um, they're helping to prepare items for distribution. Um, this is a really wonderful way for our students to have meaningful and hands-on experiences while giving them the opportunity to contribute to the community, much like one of the, um, I don't know, objectives that Lynn shared when she talked about bringing Launch here.
Cam, does that mean you, you bus them there after school? That's a great idea.
No, they go there. Oh, they don't bus. They take them, go ahead.
How do they get there?
They actually walk.
Oh, they walk.
Oh, but they do it after school, so.
No, this is part of Launch. So this is our eighteen to twenty-two year old students. So this is part of the work that they do during their, their, their school day.
People's Pantry.
It's at the Rotary and the White.
The White Church.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
Yes.
North Parish, thank you.
Our middle school students, middle school has a cross-country, um, so our boys team had their second best score ever. A hundred and thirty points. They finished fifth place at the meet. We have a couple of students there, Brady Hart, Cam Mayo and Gus Salvia, who were the top twenty-five and took home medals in Division One, Boys Championship. And then the girls finished sixth in the division. Dylan Demmons, Anna Grace, uh, sorry, Anna Grace, I'm not going to say her name right. Uh, Anna Evangelista, they all medaled in their race, finishing in the top twenty-five. Franklin School, um, this is their newly established student council. I think Ms. Radeski talked about that when she was here. They have branches of student council, much like branches of government. They have a social media group, a raise praise group, an assembly group, a morning announcement group, a service project group and a spirit group. Um, the service project group, they, um, worked to bring one of the traditions from, um, their friends from Kittredge School that joined their school. Kittredge School had this green monster that, um, they used to put out for students. So Ms. Radeski and Mrs. Queenen, uh, the two administrators drove over to Kittredge, rescued the green monster, brought it back. And so kids can donate their Halloween candy that they're not going to have. And then they, um, distribute that to.
Why aren't they going to have their Halloween candy?
It's extra.
It's extra. Maybe they had too much.
I don't understand.
My daughter went and fed the green monster. It's amazing, by the way, to see that. It is amazing. And the kids, it's full, yeah.
What is this extra Halloween candy?
You want me to be quick? No questions like that.
No such thing.
Ma'am, celebrated, um, uh, Dia de la Mortis, Victoria Torres, who is our parent liaison. She leads a group with our students, but even got our custodian, Kevin Foster, involved in hanging the decorations in the cafeteria. And they really enjoy doing that. Uh, this is what we talked about a little bit earlier. Um, our high school team, teachers Kerry Harnos and Ruth Delaware, along with Ms. O'Neil and Carol Lockum, participated in the Science Curriculum Adaptation Project for Educators, or it's known as Scape, to make science accessible for all students, as I mentioned. Cara and Lynn presented at the Department of Education's board meeting, um, just recently, um, to talk about the work that's being done in North Andover. Um, but that whole team, um, participated in a two-day training in December. Um, Cara has been asked to present the new scape to cohort two, to the new group that is, that's learning, um, this. And so it's a lot of accolades to Cara and the work. Um, and Lynn is going to say.
It's all Cara and the teachers. I mean, Cara and the teachers. Yes.
Am I allowed to make a small comment?
Sure.
In terms of modeling for others across the state, doing fantastic, even helping my own colleagues at Chelsea do the work. Um, and being really helpful and sharing data and how to collect data with, with people. So that's awesome. That should be included in her evaluation.
So noted.
Modeling.
Check. Um, our, our North Andover World Language students were inducted into the World Language Honor Society. So you have in the upper left hand, I'm going to say Spanish. Um, in the upper right hand is our German students. And down below are our, nope, upper right hand is our French students and down below is our German students who were inducted into the World Language Program. So it was great to see. It was really nice. I, uh, this program, um, it's a little bit more intimate than, um, Honor Society because there's a little bit less students. So it's very student-led. The students, um, sort of have a candle and they transfer the light to the next student. Um, and the students do a lot of the presenting, which was, which was great. Um, A B E C C has school spirit like nobody I've ever seen. They want to thank their PTO, Nikki Panopoulos, who I was her second grade teacher, just saying.
Did we get to see this?
Yes, and Stacy is all for organizing their very first fun run. And if this works, this is the video. There's probably no sound, but you don't really need the sound. So all of the staff dressed up in these inflatables and they did the first lap before the kids. It was their very first fun run.
Just imagine the kids, how the absurd, like, this is amazing.
Look at, look at that. That's Sherry Tardugno. I know it is. Look at the clown.
Oh my god.
Got upside down.
You can watch it eighteen times and just focus on a different inflatable?
So are the big ones teachers?
All the, all the ones in the inflatables are teachers. All those are the kids. And the teachers did one first lap. They all sort of got together and went and got these inflatables and decided who they were going to be. It was absolutely adorable. It was their very first fun run. They, they did raise a fair amount of money. They're thrilled. Um, the PTO board has changed a little bit at, um, and, and some are the same. Um, but they have reorganized themselves to do some more activities and I'm really proud of the A B E C school. As we are with everybody. Um, so here's just a few things that have been going on. Um, I got to visit the Atkinson School and North Andover Middle School, um, in my superintendent visits since I've last seen you. I had a board meeting with SEEM. Um, we had a building respectful community meeting, which was great. Um, we had opportunity to talk a lot about some of the things that are in our town and ways that we can support families. Um, we have rolled out our administrative mentoring program. Um, so just like in any district, you have a mentoring program for new teachers. Um, this year we happen to have a fair amount of new administrators and so we have an administrative mentoring program, um, that Kristen oversees that we rolled out.
How does that, I, I don't want a long explanation, but how does that work? It seems like a really good idea.
Yep. So we matched, Kristen, do you want to talk?
Absolutely. We match each of our new administrators with a, with a administrator that's been here. The state actually, the DESE actually has a lot of resources for new administrators who are being inducted. And so, um, we pair up their administrators, we meet several times a year with the entire group so that they have the resource of one another. Uh, they will visit each other.
Meaning in other schools?
Uh huh.
Oh, cool.
They will visit each other and also the mentor and mentee will visit each other doing a, um, like a teacher evaluation or evaluating some other. And so a lot of like on-the-job training, but the group is great. And it's really a nice support system for all of us.
So are we talking about administrators that are not academic? Or are we talking about like principals and assistant principals and, and your?
Principals, assistant principals, our new special education directors, um, curriculum team, yes.
Anybody that's new to our district, um, even if they have had experience, so, um, they are, they've received a mentor this year. So it's great. And they're.
It just really makes sense to look around and see who does what and what you can learn from.
It is. It's a great group.
Yeah.
We spent a little time at our retreat this summer. And so, um, Kristen said to the new folks before we went into retreat, one of the things she gave them was, as you get to know some of the new administrators in the district, if there's a person you click with, or if there's a person that you like aspire to be, or you, you feel like there's something you could learn from them, she gave them a little form to fill out, sort of confidentially of, I might like to maybe be paired with this person. And then we were able to ask her, do those people, are you interested? And those that didn't, some just said, oh, I'd love them all. They're all great. So we did some pairing. I thought that was great. Um, Kristen and I are flexing our finance muscles because we finished our educational finance course through Georgetown University. Uh, we had two courses since, two classes since the last time we saw you. It was a very, I don't know, it was worthwhile, um, class. It was intense. I forgot what it's like to be in school again, you know, where like people just go. You have to really pay attention. Um, but it was great. And there are a lot of takeaways and things that we're already using as we start thinking about the budget. We had celebrated educator night. I know that Mr. Hicks will talk about that, so I'll move right along. Our central office team has met a couple of times, um, since I've seen you, went to the World Language, I told you. Uh, we had a leadership team meeting, um, just this week. So we are looking at the, um, AI guidelines that are being developed. We will eventually bring those to school committee for you to see, um, artificial intelligence. Um, we started to examine the work that some people in the district have been doing. So we'll bring that forward soon. Um, we reviewed with all of our administrators, the budget directives that you voted on. And then we started to do the work on what are our district needs. Um, so we're in the budget development process. And then we had some updates on some of our operational issues that are, that we do. I think Ally told you I went to the North Andover High School Student Council meeting. They're great. Um, they had some questions for me. I had some questions for them. Um, and so we just spent some time going back and forth about that. So it was interesting. So, um, the principal there is making some changes about lockers and I won't get into it, but the kids are hot on it. It's kind of like cell phones, which just interestingly, they all said the cell phone's going great. But they're really hot about this lockers and they wanted to talk to me about it. And so I sort of said to them, I'll, you can tell me a little bit. I said, it's not really my jurisdiction, right? Uh, it's the building principal. She makes these rules. But so they told me and how unfair and how terrible this is and, you know, the tragedy and like that, why this is so bad. So I said to them, okay, you know that Ms. Holman's going to come here for why that she, you know, she doesn't just make this crazy rule. So let's think about the other side of the story. And so why do you think that she's going to be imposing these, these rules on you about your lockers? And so we went through a few things. So I said to them, you know, do your homework before you meet with her. They're meeting with her tomorrow so that you can counteract. Uh, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. But I basically told them I'm staying out of it. Right?
Wise.
Pick my lane. Um, I had a meeting with the Greater Lawrence Technical, um, School Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. We meet yearly so that we can talk about, um, the, us, our students who might have the, um, who might be interested in moving on to Greater Lawrence Technical School, um, and then sort of tracking what our enrollment looks like. Um, and the enrollment process is changing a little bit. Um, the state is, is moving the change, um, in two ways. One, the state has put together, um, there's some expectations, um, for all of middle, middle schools to, um, have a clear path for students who want to go to a vocational school. And we have done much better about that in the last few years. But now you have to have a clear, defined plan, which we have, and we've uploaded that, um, to the Department of Education. And, um, before, it was really based on some point systems. And that perhaps what the state is saying is that acceptance might not have been a hundred percent fair for all students based on that. And so that there shouldn't, there needs to be some opportunity for, you know, if you're a student who has some really great supports at home and can help you with your application and get everything in, then, then you might get in. But maybe there's somebody who should be going to technical schools and doesn't have those supports. So some ways to make it a little bit fairer. Um, so we might see an uptick in amount of students that are accepted, um, to Greater Lawrence. We have twenty-five spots, I believe, that are open to North Andover. Um, and then we talked a little bit about the After Dark program, um, because we also participate in that. So we have students who are complete students at Greater Lawrence Technical School. And then we have students who are North Andover Public School, high school students, who, uh, participate in some of their core classes here. And then they go for part of their day at Greater Lawrence Tech, which is called the After Dark program. Um, that we have seen, so I think the first year, there were like seven or eight students. Now this year, there are seventeen students. Um, but just sort of talking about that and how we're gonna, um, keep that moving forward. Um, okay. Kristin and I met with, um, Teaching Learning Alliance, who is helping us with our, they're the, um, the company that we're using for our strategic plan. I'll talk about that in a second. I did go to that unified basketball game, which was amazing. And then today, I had my, um, virtual coaching, um, with my whole cohort of, uh, first-year superintendents with the new superintendent induction session, which was great. Um, we talked about walkthroughs and, and, um, being mindful of, um, how we're doing those, how it's changing instruction, what we're looking for. So it was really productive. So moving on to our strategic plan. Uh, as I said, our partner organization is Teaching Learning Alliance. Um, our project timeline is, we really have kicked this off by having our first meeting this week. Um, and we are looking to have a finished strati- five-year strategic plan by March of 2026. It's an aggressive timeline, um, but, um, they assure us that we can, we can do this. Um, so some of the things that will be happening are, we sort of compile some of our data and we share that data with them. So this can be any kind of data that we feel may impact our strategic plan, MCAS data, um, any, uh, uh, the CPAC report, the, um, the Urban Collaborative Report, the Equity Process Report, we can share that data with them. Um, we need to build a strategic planning committee. So that is something that will be going out for me next week, um, a letter to our community in turn, uh, explaining a little bit about this process of a strategic plan. And really, so the work, the, the bulk of the work is gonna be in that strategic planning committee. So they're going to receive all of the data. There's going to be diff- three different, uh, committees within that committee. One looking at finance facilities in operation, one looking at culture, and one looking at curriculum. Um, so it's really important that we have a diverse population on our strategic planning committee. Um, I'd like to see two school committee members, um, on that, that, um, committee as well. So that form will be going out soon, and we'll, we'll get that out to you as well. Looking at probably a committee of about twenty-five to thirty people, um, because they are going to be the ones that are synthesizing the data. So we really, this company that we're working with is really helping collect and organize the data. But the committee is going to be doing the work of, of putting that into a five-year plan with, um, support of the consultant. Um, they'll build a survey with us, um, they'll survey the constituents for us. Then they'll also do, um, uh, so those are obviously will be electronic surveys that we send out. We'll have identified focus groups. We'll have two days of focus groups where they're on-site with us. Um, and we can identify who those focus groups might be, and Kristin and I are working on that. Um, a data analysis, and then the presentation to the school committee. That was a mouthful.
Thank you.
We're really excited about this. This is, this is great. This is gonna be a five-year plan, and I think it's gonna get us to the eighty percent.
There you go.
I, that's aspirational right there. Um, any quick questions? I'll allow two. None, great. Um, moving on to chair update, uh, Hall of Fame celebrating teachers, wonderful night. Thank you to the folks over at the Historical Society. Um, thank you to Diane's Cafe, um, for the wonderful snacks. The apple crisp was amazing, and the pizzelles were perfect. Um, wonderful night to celebrate our two newest inductees, uh, Mr. Bert Noyes and Mrs. Janet Gaffney. Um, it was wonderful to see them and to hear their inspirational words. Um, and I think the tire staff is in for a treat next year when they come back on opening day to give, um, hopefully, I think they just need similar remarks. Mr. Noyes focused a lot on the things he learned and the sports he got from his colleagues over the years. Um, what was wonderful of that, and I think Mrs., Ms. Armand mentioned this too, is teaching can be really lonely. Um, you're in a room with like twenty-five kids by yourself most of the day, and it can be hard to be, to live that way. Um, and like seeking out relationships and being close with the people around you is, is important. And it's hard to do that at times. Um, and then Mrs. Gaffney talked about, uh, building relationships with, with people as well. And that, that stuck with me. Um, so congratulations to them. And we had a lot of wonderful people, our impressed status, that were celebrated. Um, so congratulations to them again, um, for being there. And thank you to the, um, rest of the committee for being there to share in that moment as well. It was a good night. Um, negotiations update, uh, as a reminder, we have, um, started negotiations with two of our, uh, groups, um, that we have to do some contract work with this year, um, and the administrative assistants, um, and, um, our negotiating team have come to terms on a first meeting that is set for December first. Um, and we'll update as appropriate throughout the process for those. Um, community chats, we are going to schedule those. Originally, we had thought between, um, having some, um, in budget season, so before, oh, I've written it down on my update last time. Do you remember, Mrs. Quormier?
I don't remember the dates, Scott, at this point.
We'll have Michelle send out the Google doodle poll of the weeks of availability when we want to have them. One, um, after initial budget presentation for one, after public hearing for a second one. So look at those, um, availability of those weeks. Um, I floated the idea, it may be if we think about having, I think, one at the, um, I think at the senior center during the day while they're open would be a really good time to do a, a community chat as well, to get, um, input from that, um, constituency, constituency as well. Um, so we'll put that together for everyone to share.
I have a friend who goes there regularly, and the input is, don't spend much money.
Um, okay. Um, budget liaisons, uh, you had a meeting with-
We did.
With our budget-
We, we had a meeting with-
I can't talk, go on.
Lynn O'Neil, I mean, not Lynn O'Neil. Gail Dowd. Congratulations on your new appointment. With Gail and Tracy, um, and myself. Uh, quick summary?
Quick summary.
All right. Received a great tutorial on understanding warrant reports in more depth, including remaining budget columns, uh, identifying the remaining budget column, identification of similarly named accounts, all the things that used to stress me out, to be blunt. And I'm now feeling a lot better about it. So that's number one. Number two, we agreed that the monthly status budget reports format that we saw a little bit of at October ninth, with only three categories, we asked for more categories. Not a specific number, I, you know, generally thinking like six to ten, but whatever that, whatever, um, Gail and Tracy feel is appropriate. And our direction on that was, we just like it to be the ones, to include the ones that might be the ones most subjective variance, right? Things we should be watching. So tell us what they are, you know, and we'll give you feedback on that, but that's the idea, right? So, but the format that she used in that October ninth-
Third, okay.
Or whatever, the first October meeting was, was what, what we hoped to get. But just a little more detail. You know, based on their collective experience recommendations. Um, I thought we were gonna see an example of that tonight, but I don't think we are. But hopefully, we'll get it next time.
Nope, you will have, um, the next budget update is eleven-twenty.
Okay.
Maybe that is, is that next time?
Yeah, after the meeting with the accountant, right?
So we, um, I, we, we mapped him out so that it follows right after we have our town meeting. So when we meet with the town manager and the CFO of the town, and then we can make sure our numbers match, then that's when she will come to school committee.
Okay, so the next one will be November twenty.
Yep.
But that sounds, but yeah, that, my understanding exactly was that, that it would be after the meeting with town finance people, we'd come with that update. Uh, and, and we also made the request that if, you know, each time that happens, if any significant variance is anticipated or expected, we should obviously know that and it should be pointed out during that report. And then-
So just, there's one other topic. I just wanted to comment a little bit about that. David and I both have said for a while that we want a picture of all the money we spend. Some of the categories, like, um, special ed reimbursement, it's really confusing. Does it come to us, does it come to the town? And we came away comforted that Gail's able to, will, will be able to sort of show us that.
It's part of that, part of that other.
Basically, she said, they really already have it, and I think maybe just putting it together. But the other issue is that, um, when you read in our policy, it says that the budget will be decided by the school committee by accounts, budget accounts, and that the budget accounts are to be prepared or agreed upon jointly between the school committee and the administration. And that's not, never happened, at least not in David's memory or mine. And so, um, Gail hadn't been aware of that, but she said, yes, we, she's done that in other districts. And she said that was fine. And, and then what we, we asked her to present a sort of first pass, her recommendation about the categories. And she'll present them to the two of us, and we'll discuss them back and forth. And then eventually, it has to be decided by the school committee. And I, I, there's an obvious metaphor here, and I don't want people to misunderstand it. But this is, in effect, what the president is fighting with the Congress about. I don't mean to suggest that there's any similarity between our administration and the president. But, but the issue about whether you appropriate the money in, in one big hunk and then the administration spends it, or whether the school committee or the Congress has some control about the categories, is kind of basic. And so it's not, I don't, there's, it's not like there's any opposition. We, we're not fighting, we, we all agreed that that's a good idea. It just hasn't happened, and we agreed that it will happen.
I imagine with that, it might have, I'm gonna go with the best-case scenario that it probably happened at one point, and it's been happening that way. And it's time for us to think about, is that the best way to do it? I think that's a-
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. It did, I'm sure, it, it may well have happened at some point, right? But then you said, did you mean to say it hasn't been happening that way recently?
We, we weren't part of making that decision, and it's a probably a good time to question, is that still the right choice to make in terms of what those cost centers are?
It's supposed to be a yearly decision, right? Yeah, so we-
Right.
Well, I mean, the, the idea that, yeah, I mean, I guess this, the policy means that, that it can be changed either, either side. I mean, the administration could come to us and say, I don't really, we need to change it, or we can come to them. But it hasn't happened for a while.
Yep.
So what we kind of agreed on was that it's gonna happen, and it's gonna start with Gail and, and-
Gail and Tracy, you're gonna have another meeting with us. And then we'll whittle that down and then present to you.
Thank you. Um, follow-up question on the first thing you said, understanding the warrant.
Yeah. Oh, uh, sure.
Is that stuff gonna be communicated out to, in terms of how we see the, the warrant?
Uh, I, it's, well, it's, I could try that. Um, so basically, yeah, why don't I try that?
Okay.
So basically, I could summarize what I learned in a document. That would probably be the best way to do it.
Thank you. And share that for information purposes.
Well, one, the, the warrant as it used to be, as I think we got it originally when I joined the committee, you had every single warrant in no particular order. And clearly, it makes, s- s- makes sense to group them. Like, you might want all the general fund together. And you probably want them grouped within each fund by major category. And you might not even feel for a report that, I don't know. I don't personally feel the need to look at every single warrant, but every single item specific, but maybe just the sum of the ones for any vendor.
Well, so I, and in my look at it was looking at it by kind of category. So where I used to go crazy is when they'd see a line, for example, that said transportation. And that line would say you had no budget left. But then somewhere else, there'd be another line that said transportation, and it had budget left.
Right.
So what I would love to see is all that consolidated into one, into groups. I did it manually, and it does work. It's just not presented to us in a way that we can quickly see it.
So that's what we need, the standard report, right?
Yeah.
So there's gotta be, there, I mean, we're not the only school district with this problem.
Right.
It's gotta be a standard report out of Munis we can use.
So I need to, um, I need to go back to my notes from that because I just can't say it right now.
That's fine.
In real time, but that, that, we're gonna work towards that.
You can share that with us next time.
Yeah.
It might be worth asking our MASC person, Alicia, if she's got some suggestions of districts that she thinks does it really well.
Thank you. Um, we've put together a list of dates for the, um, January to June meeting dates. Uh, the process was, I took the, the dates that we were identified, um, by the town manager for our budget meetings, because those are based on the budget calendar. And then I just went every other week, um, skipping vacations off of that. We had made some tweaks, um, in the later part of the year because of when vacations were and other things. So they're every other week except for Thursday, May seventh to, uh, Thursday, April thirtieth to May seventh is only a one-week gap. Um, but we felt like that was the best scenario with town meeting right after that. We wanted to make sure we had those meetings at that time. So, um, those are our planned dates for the remainder of the year. Um, we usually definitely go through June fourth. We're gonna hold June eighteenth, um, so put that on your calendar. That'll be, uh, if necessary. Um, in the past three years, they, that's last date has always been necessary, so I can imagine it happening.
And then with that, that last date, the June eighteenth, because the, the following day is a day off. But some people might be taking long weekends, so the eighteenth, I mean, could be sparse. Maybe just moving it the week before or a different date, just, I mean, it's the start of summer. It's the first three-day weekend. Could be hard to find.
It might still be school.
Might be prob-, yeah, got it. A lot of people might be off for three-day weekend, so just mention it.
Yep.
Do with what you will.
If we don't have a quorum, we can definitely then at that time change it to a different date.
Do with what you will, yep.
You're talking about June eighteenth, right?
Yeah, because the next day is, it's a day off. It's a long weekend, it's a holiday.
Which week, which day is this?
June, Juneteenth, June nineteenth would be a holiday, is a holiday.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um, if that presents a problem with people, please let us know. We can, we should make that adjustment sooner than later. Um, what I've included in everyone's packet as well is the same dates. Um, and we've all started to work out when, um, various presentations are going to happen over the course of the second half of the year. Um, we've included, uh, budget updates, I believe, on here, superintendent?
Yes, you'll see on this one, um, when all the, when you should expect a budget update.
These are subject to change, um, but just to give you an idea of what we're doing and when, um, some of them have to happen, has, happen at certain times because of, uh, rules, um, that we have to follow based on policy or state law. Um, so, and there are some things that we will, just because there're not, things aren't there yet, they will be added in.
Well, and just remember, we'll be in the thick of budget season, so we're gonna wanna be just mindful of what we're putting on the agenda, because I think we'll maybe have public comment and, you know.
Then lastly, um, I just wanna say, uh, give a shout out to Mr. Nugent and Coach Cirillo from the high school, um, our eighth-grade boys, A Team, is playing in the Cape Anne Youth Football League Super Bowl this Sunday, super awesome, they're undefeated, um, number one seed, um, but the two gentlemen at the high school have been really helpful, um, in, um, allowing the kids to use the, the locker room, and getting a bus here for our team bus this weekend, um, so thank you to them, and also to our high school football players who have been coaches, and were there to support the boys, just really awesome, um, the Booster Club does a great thing, both, and the cheerleaders were there to, to help support the kids, but thank you to those, um, members of the school community to help the town, appreciate it. And lastly, well, not lastly, but Kittredge Elementary School update, we have one small update, right?
Well, ju-, uh, ju-, there hasn't been a meeting in the last two weeks, but, um, so I was just gonna summarize where we are, right, that the final schematic design's on track for submission, um, in December, at, at their December meeting, where did I write this down? Uh, here we go. Yeah, track for submission to the Mass S B C at their December meeting now, for approval at their February twenty-twenty-six meeting, and our next meeting is November eighteenth, no, up into the public. So that's really it.
Yep.
Great. Couple comment? Member comment, Mr. Moskovich?
No.
Mrs. Sams? Mr. Brown?
Hungry.
Mrs. Cormier? All-inclusive motion for adjournment? Oh, wait, sorry, pause, next meeting Thursday, November twentieth, here at six-thirty, tri-board meeting, we have a set date from Monday, December fifteenth, and annual town meeting, Tuesday, May twelfth, get your babysitters.
And now I would like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes, we are adjourned at ten-oh-one.